And we will start the meeting. Would you all stand? Call the meeting to order. Would you all stand for the pledge allegiance? And Bert, would you lead us in this place?
Yes. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
You may be seated.
Might be to dismisses.
Yeah.
Jeffrey made it.
There's Jeffrey. Okay. Agenda review. Jeff, any? Oh, wait till you do. Jim, anything? Agenda review.
The only thing I would say is that we, I did see the public notice for the school to drop in on us, so why don't we add them?
Yeah, we'll add them to the agenda and I'll talk more about that in a minute. We're gonna kinda change things around a little bit. Anything?
I'm all set.
All set. Jeff?
I'm good.
Good. Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
How was the trip?
Good.
Good. Okay. Minutes from the previous meeting.
Motion to accept.
Second. Any changes or additions or? I only wanna say one thing.
I'm very happy with it.
Riley? You did a good job.
Thank you.
Very good job. Very accurate. Okay. Next, the consent agenda.
Ballot on those minutes?
What's that?
Ballot on those minutes?
Oh, yeah. No, I wanted to hear this. Let's vote on the minutes. I have a...
You did. Motion in a second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Upstayed.
Thank you. I'm a little distracted tonight because of, my dog's not doing well, so I don't say that. It's just bringing that out. That's why I'm kinda off a little bit. I'd like to start off the meeting by just, first of all, recognizing the fact that the school board is here and we'll talk more about how we're gonna get to you in this But first, I'd like to just talk for a second about the storm damage that was here a few days ago. Sandhill, I don't know if any of you got up to see it. It was a mess. Ugly, I refer to it as. Jim and I went up and as of right now, there's what? One road? One lane up there?
Yes.
Hunter? One lane.
Maybe a little more.
A little more. But I do wanna thank, I mean, this just hit us and immediately we had the town departments up there, the highway department, police, and fire, all right there pitching in to get this done. It was an emergency and we needed to get that done. I also wanna thank Sean Carroll and his crew. They just jumped right in and luckily they had that big excavator and that moved a lot of stuff that was up there. Anybody else wanna comment on that?
No, there were a number of other roads that were affected, but it was a good plan to get them all, you know, back up to Spiff. But, yeah, good job by all the town forces to get, get right after it.
I'll...
It rained five gallon buckets pretty hard.
Yeah, it did, didn't it?
For three hours.
Yeah. And I had a chance to ride around with Jim. Very interesting riding with a former police chief.
Did you ride in bad?
No. I thought about getting out and walking. No. No.
Did he wipe out the law?
Of course he did. Of course he did. Did they change it to like 50 miles an hour on these? 60 miles an hour on the back road?
I thought so.
He had his wife's car, so he had to be a little better on. Also, tonight, under action items, we will be opening the bids at the request of this meeting on the 73 old Goshen Road. It's, like, will be open under the action items. Be the last, it'll be E. under action items. Now...
Before we move on, you still have consent agenda.
Okay. Jeff? I'm trying to move this along, but, okay. Consent agenda.
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good. I will tell you, just as a note of information, the board does have another meeting tonight after this meeting and we would like to make, we've told the person between 9:00 and 9:30 that we could get online with it, but if this goes over, goes over. Okay. Second of all, I want to change the meeting order a little bit tonight to try to bring forth a discussion that is probably the primary reason that everybody's here tonight, and that is the school busing, the bus garage area, and see if we can begin to bring some peace to that whole process. Bring some healing to that whole process, because that's had an effect on this town. It's also had an effect on this board, and I know the school board. It's had an effect on you. So, we can solve this. Now, the board, this board, took the position that the vote, while not illegal, you did the right thing, you voted the way you needed to vote. We, the biggest issue for us was the enforceability of the lease itself, the conditions of the lease. That was our concern, major concern. We did have a lawyer look at it, and I'm trying to be upfront with people so you know where we were with this. And he had his position and we adopted that position, position being that it was not enforceable. Well, you can be legally right and you can be wrong at the same time. And that's what, and I'm speaking as me, Barry Cottle, pretty heavy taxpayer in this, not weight-wise, but, in this town. And we need to heal. We need to stop this constant disruption of your ability to work and our ability to work. Our ability to do things for this town. Their ability to do things for the town, but especially for kids. And you know that's where my heart is anyway, with that process. So, I've done a lot of soul searching about this. Talked to a lot of people. And it is my opinion, and only my opinion at this point, that this board needs to reconsider its position. That we need to stop fighting about the bays. You've gotta have a place to put them, put your buses, and we don't want, you know, it's usually older people like myself that are out there bus driving. I don't want them out there shoveling off a roof, things of that nature. At the same point, though, what does still bother me is that $1.99 year business. Maybe we can talk about that or not, you know? But as far as I'm concerned, this is my opinion, you have those bays, my opinion. I'll be asking the board later to re, take a vote of reconsideration in terms of that. But, you know, we're the sunshine town. We're not the shout and holler at each other town, okay? We need to begin to work as a community. We need to begin to work, even though it's two different groups, we got a lot of common interests and we need to work to do that. So, that's my position. I wanted to get that out right off in the beginning so that people, before the whole thing starts, that people will understand my position. Jim is also asked to speak for a few minutes. Jim is my, our vice chair. Very happy that he is.
Can he speak to you now or no?
No, no, not, not right now. You'll get your chance later.
Open forum.
But I appreciate the fact you did put your hand up. You did speak at the same time, so wait till I recognize you, okay? That's a big rule here. Wait to be recognized. And I'll get to you. We'll take the time. We may, I may kinda look around and, we've gotta move this along. I don't think anybody, although, takes 'til midnight, takes 'til midnight, but I don't think it needs to. I think we could come to some resolution. So, Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Barry. It just, for, for me and the, and the amount of time and energy that's gone into this topic, this discussion, the opportunities that we've extended the school for a workable solution that would work for not only the school but for the town, that we never really got a response on was disheartening. That would've afforded us an opportunity to have worked this out in a meaningful way that wouldn't have had resulted in, you know, non-scheduled meetings for the school board, emails go out to get people excited about coming and being here tonight to voice their concerns and opinions, that I really feel that we, as collective boards, could have worked within a group to have solved the issue, to move us beyond any hard feelings on either side. Clearly, if people paid attention through the budgeting process, we had a lot of discussion about the needs of the town and there were comments made that the town has kinda been after those bus bays for years. Well, yeah, we've wanted those bays for a long time. Why? Because we need more space. School clearly needs more space. Through our budgeting process, we talked a lot about the fact that we pay lease, you know, to a lot of other places for extra space.
About $10,000.
We could've saved that money by having this space, but if we acquiesce and give the school those two bays, well, the town is going to have to continue to spend more lease dollars, continue to invest in more space for the town. So whether the school builds it or the town builds it, we're paying for it either way. We have, we need the space. So how to get there is, well, it's gonna pay for by the school or pay for by the town. We're gonna have to figure that out and we're gonna have to get there collectively. As a taxpayer, disappointed that we couldn't come to a, you know, an offline, so to speak, mutual agreement that would've benefited both sides, but that being said, here we are. To think for a second that anybody on this board doesn't care about the town or the community or the taxpayers, being a large taxpayer myself, Barry, right? Figured in little, I guess.
Both of us.
You know, is, is kinda crazy. And to put the superintendent and the manager at odds, well, long after the superintendent's gone and long after the manager's gone, I'll guarantee that I'm still gonna be here and the rest of us are still gonna be in this town also. A lot of the taxpayers are still gonna be here too. So for us to figure out a way to take them out of it and put us in it is important. So to think and to be adversarial in this process is short-sighted at best. And we certainly do have the best of intentions to make sure that we do work this out in a correct and legal fashion. I took my oath, raised my right hand to uphold the laws, state and Hampshire Constitution, and to do something that our attorney tells us is not legal is challenging. To say that we're gonna follow the wishes of the voters is correct. We'll do that. But to do that in a legal way that's defendable on both sides and we can take care of our fiduciary responsibility to take care of the prudent affairs of the town while the school board takes care of the prudential affairs of the school, while looking after the taxpayers, certainly very, very important. And I hope, really do hope that we can get to a good place tonight. So, that's all I have to say about that.
The public will certainly have their chance to speak during open forum. I'd like to welcome Jeff North. He's in, he's in London right now, Jeff?
Austria. I had a hard time logging on. Is it too late for me to join the meeting?
No. Just, the fun's just beginning.
Okay.
But...
I apologize.
You don't need to apologize. Thanks for show, for coming on.
Yes, it's 12:30 here. It's late. I wanna be on the meeting, so.
So, at this point, you know, Jim mentioned, you know, costs, things of that nature. There has been work behind the scenes. I mean, as I said to Hunter, you know, we're bright people. We can figure, not being egotistical, but we can figure things out. And we can figure out something about the ambulances. I know we can. Jeff North has been looking at some things. I've examined some, some issues at different places where we might be able to go. It's gonna cost money. No offense to the board, I think we're in a better position to deal with that than you might be. 'Cause I always remember the year as principal, I had to pass out staples. I couldn't pass out boxes of staples. I had to pass out one sheath, sheath of staples. So I know it can get hard in regards to that. But it'll take some time for us to figure that out, but we will. We'll get there, that process, at least, again, my opinion, if we can do that. Talked to Jeff about it a lot. Talked to Jim about it a lot. And we'll, we'll see what happens. But at this time, I would like to turn this over to Steve Morse as the chairperson of the board and give you guys a chance, the board a chance, to speak at this time.
I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Cottle. So, I spent the greater portion of the last 24 hours combing through all of the communications that I had access to. Because I heard y'all have mentioned it on this board and we have mentioned it, that there seems to be a lack of communication, is where the communication is, is, is breaking down and that's where we're kinda at an impasse. And what I found was, there's a day or two and I have like seven pages where I just kinda took emails that I had access to and just kinda laid it out. And there's a date to where we had a non-public, the town manager had written to the superintendent and the superintendent that night at 10:50 in the evening, after our board meeting, had written back and said, "We plan on paying everything."
Yep.
And I think from our perspective, at that point, it was kinda over with because the decision was, hey, no leasehold. And at the time, on March 6th, Jenna Darling was the chair and she had came here and she had said, and apologized and thought, we had made it clear and that there was obvious a communication breakdown. And from my perspective, now as the chairman, is that that's what got us here, was a breakdown in communication between the town manager and the superintendent, as well as us as two boards. And I know that there had been an attempt to meet with Mr. Burrows back in November with Mr. Beard, baked to talk about the condition so that with, the boards could talk about it and see if we could, what resolutions we could come to. And that was the initial spark that had tried to get the two boards together. And so from my perspective, I am not looking to cost the town a great deal of money, just as you had mentioned before and as our coordinator has mentioned, our bus drivers are older. We don't have the, the, the skillset to get up on top of the buses during the summer or in the snowstorms and to, to clear that off. It's dangerous. We gotta come up with a way, either purchase a system that scrapes that out. Like, there's more to it than just putting up a pole barn because that doesn't, and from the board's perspective, that doesn't answer the primary concerns of someplace warm, someplace for personnel matters to be discussed in private. So if the coordinator has to discuss something with a bus driver, that they have a quiet place to talk confidentially. And then, as we had mentioned before, the, the issues that had occurred with the restrooms at a certain point in time, but I understand that's been taken care of. So, when I came to the last meeting, my intent after the vote was to not, to, to discuss it in front of the public, so that there is something illegal, so that the public knows that your lawyers have advised you that this is illegal, because as a citizen, take me away from the chair of the school board, like you had mentioned before, that's the, the will of the people is, all right, let's, let's figure this out. And so that's why, when I came at the last meeting, it wasn't, but I don't wanna work, I just, I wanted us to have a chance to talk in public so that we can get the feedback.
It wasn't illegal. I think that's the wrong term. I don't want anybody to think that things were illegal. It was not enforceable, okay? Not enforceable. Very different. Not illegal, yet every right to do what you did. Okay? Every right. And I've said that publicly many times now. But, well, that was, and I'm sorry to have interrupted.
No, no. So, and I think working together, just as you said, that just makes sense. We need to be a team, just, you know? We talked about it, you know, when we come to different meetings, I know Mr. Kess was coming to our meetings and he shared feedback of things that he's noticed, 'cause when he was chair of the board, and, you know, that feedback is appreciated because we can't operate separately all the time because then we end up setting each other's toes. So with that being said, I have no issue working board to board personally, just like, as you've mentioned, individually, to figure out a solution that's fair so that the town's not paying for something that the school needs to pay for. Does that make sense? Right? So electricity, that makes sense to me and we probably should've been paying that since the, the beginning without seeing the actual, like, I've seen the town side from the 1979 vote, but I haven't seen if the school also voted to provide any money. Not that they did or didn't, I just, I haven't found that like I have with the...
Well, you have been paying over $5,000 for 20 something years.
So, I think that we can work together as two boards so that we can move past it and that the community feels like they have two boards working seamlessly on their behalf to represent the sunshine town and make Newport what we all talk about often is the specialness that we have here in this town. And then, I'll turn it, Jenna would like to say anything since you afforded Jim, if you don't mind, don't...
Anybody on the board can speak.
School board is what we're talking about.
Well, I certainly appreciate both what Barry and, and Jim have said tonight. I do agree that we could've all done things better and I'll be the first to take responsibility for that. I wish that it hadn't come down to this time crunch, 'cause I think unfortunately at this point, feelings have been hurt, people have been offended, and that, I don't think that was anything intentional by anybody. So, we're all here so that we can move this forward. Bottom line.
Thank you, Jennifer. Could you go through your chair, please?
Yes, Mr. Paul.
Just a matter of, you know, not that I was avoiding you, but this is your board meeting.
Do I divorce myself from the school board at this point in order to speak as, as a citizen?
That's an open forum later on.
There's no open forum. You can speak right now?
As a school board member.
Correct.
Don't divorce yourself.
I went, we went to the Supreme Court over this separation with Henry Robison years ago. I will speak as a citizen right now and also as a board member. The things that really began this was, we were in a current year budget and had already approved the next year's budget. And then comes this untimely request. Where does the money come from? And you have budgets that you have to put together. What would you do if we put together and then put a request on you and your budget's all said and done, port and come free?
Is that a question?
It, it takes some thinking. If you are really community, you say, "We can't do this now. We should've done this last year." Or, "We gotta do it here, make the proposal to the school," and that will happen 365 days from now. The absence of community thought at where the budget processes were is significant. That's one point, right from the beginning. The next is, what happened out there at the bus drive? The toilets. The not plowing in front of the doors, which had been done before. Minor things. And we had a report given to us at a school board meeting, which Jeff was at, and we were given this list of inequities. So at that point, I say, "We don't pay the rent, the $5,800."
Which you have every right to do.
We do leasehold improvements. And to anybody that owns, if somebody wants to do a leasehold improvement with your property, if they leave, it's yours. So, oh, it's great. Wayne, you wanna put an air conditioning unit built in? Wayne, go ahead. At your expense? Go ahead, do it. You leave tomorrow, Wayne, it's mine. So if we had poured concrete in there with that $5,800 to make a place for our buses so somebody had a creeper, they'd get underneath them and work and do an inspection, it would've been to your benefit, 'cause the concrete would've still been in there. That's point two. Then comes the obstinance, that in fact, you're the ruling party, meaning the board selectmen, town manager, and have the reins in your hand and we're on for riot. It didn't happen that way. And so, that means, now we're at point, where you're saying you have a lawyer's, lawyer telling you that in fact, it was not enforceable. I want my copy.
I'm all set. I've got, I've got my copy here.
Keith, give me more copy, please. So you've got a lawyer that says, "Oh, it's not enforceable." As well? First of all, because this man has no credit credibility left with him at all. I don't wanna see it.
His hand out.
Now, I didn't even graduate high school, but the 40s...
You done pretty well, though.
All of the statutes in the 40s are municipal regulation. And so, at what you're looking at now, 40 colon 11 small a town property, the selectmen shall have authority to manage all real property owned by the town and to regulate its use cum. All of it, you regulate it. Now, after the cuma, unless such management and regulation is delegated to other public officers by both of the town. So are we public officers or not as a school? We are an entity such as you. We're subject to all of the laws, the same. So, or is governed by other statutes, including but not limited to, and it lists the group of them which are trees and other things that were not pertinent to this subject. Roman II, the authority under paragraph one shall include the power to rent or lease such property during periods not needed for public use, provided however, that any rental or lease agreement for a period of more than one year shall not be valid unless ratified by both of the town. It was. So I want your legal opinion. And if you, if you will not supply it to me as a citizen and you will not supply it to me as a board member, you didn't get it. Because what bothered me in all of our communications, you've not put out any statute. What a lawyer does, you go in with a problem, he listens to you, says, "Yeah." But he won't go forward on that. He's gotta get to the other side. He's gotta know the other side. He's got to get to the other side. He's got to know the other side. Even though he represents you, he's got to know the other side. And everything he does will be cited in statute to back it up. We've not seen that. So all of that is particularly bothersome, and then comes this letter that we received. And it certainly says to me, you give the bird to 701 voters. 701 voters are stupid. 145 are the only smart ones in town. It doesn't make a shit in bed a difference. The vote is it. If we are all dumb, illiterate, ignorant, and we vote that way, we have a right to that, and our vote counts. If we're a registered voter, and we vote, it counts. You cannot eradicate it, because you tell somebody that you've got a legal opinion that says it's not enforceable. It's not workable. It won't happen. So that all being said, you then offer us $25,000 and a place to grow a pole barn, willfully inadequate. Doesn't even begin to do what we need to have done. So, I did not come to this meeting tonight as a board member. I came to this meeting tonight as a citizen, that happened to be a board member. So I do not think this is a proper forum to have got the board here for this discussion. We invited you to a discussion of the boards, we received a letter from this man, saying you couldn't come up with a forum, and that somebody had suggested to him that we should do two and two, come to some sort of consensus, and then take it back to the boards. I read that as, let's get it out of the public, public view, and let's do our dirty work. Now, it's right, we do it here, but I would like to have known that that was actually going to be a pocket by us as a board member. So that all being said, from my point of view, the wrongs handled on the town side cannot be corrected easily. And I will believe nothing on the legal side that you espouse, until I've seen a lawyer say, and what points he might point out. Because we also went to a lawyer who does not agree. For a matter of fact, this article was drawn up by a lawyer. So Barry, that all being said, the last straw was the letter, and then came the conversation that we had that Saturday morning, which was wonderful, because it was a turning point. So, to me, the house is burned, but my neighbor has come over and said, Bert, you've lived here for a while. I'm taking that kind of gap, your conversation. Why did you call me? I thought a lot about that. Why? Because you want to go in a different direction. And it's okay to go in a different direction. We poured some concrete here. And that's, and that's, and that's the problem. It should never have gotten there. It should. Considering our budget problems right at the get-go would have been number one. If, um, if I'm on the school board and we're thinking of something that's going to affect you, we ought to do that in advance. But, we didn't have that chance here. We had an eviction notice, an unlawful eviction notice. Not one, but two, both unlawful. So, I'm beginning to wonder, um, if your attorney is really good, or where your legal information is coming from. Those of us who have tenants are very cognizant of what you can and cannot do, and what is done in an eviction, and how it's done. So there's a big crevice between us right now, from my point of view.
From your point of view. Not necessarily the whole board.
I will not comment.
Thank you, you shouldn't.
They can do their own thing.
I agree. Well, I'll get to you. Well, it's still your part of the meeting. You want to recognize your superintendent.
Thank you. What I would like to really see tonight, is for us to just put the past in the past, because you know what? My job is to educate kids, not to come to these meetings and beg and plead for, for something that should be, without a doubt, right? We should not have our bus barn taken away from our students, you know? And, and we hear things. That we hear that on the first of the, of the, of July, you're going to lock the gate and not allow us in, which that is a time when our most vulnerable students, our specialized students.
Nobody on the board said that.
Well, I'm thankful for that, but you know how it is, right? And people hear, and information gets spread, and we hear that, and that really hurts, you know, hurts our district, hurts our, hurts our staff, and hurts our families. I, what I would like to see tonight, is for us to come, we have both boards here, let's have our meeting, and let's just end what we need to do, and let's talk about it, so that we can all start to heal. Because this has been going on way too long, and, and all we want is to, to end this. We want to know what's our next step.
Yeah.
What can we do? Right? And so that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
The past can be the past. Let's just take away and leave it.
Anybody else on the board want to say anything? Your board?
Yeah, I'm with it.
Is this a new member? Could you introduce him for us, please?
Me? I'm Darrell Jones. And I am a new member to the board.
Yeah, good. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I don't care about any of the past stuff, you know, it's so unfortunate, because what was such a simple thing was, you know, I'm reaching out to Jim, like, hey, I was just notified about these crazy things happening down here. You're on the board, can you come down and take a look? And then, it just didn't work out, which, no fault of Jim's, and I've never, I made sure, I've never come on the bosses on my, we had some meeting, and it, it didn't happen. It is what it is, right? Um, at this point, I don't care about any of that. I just want to get back to doing the job that I'm supposed to be doing, which is, you know, how can we make the school better? Not this bus barn thing, or the CTE thing, which I think we should talk about later, but, um, I don't care about that. I don't care if we did what wrong. We all know. We've all learned, we're all adults, we're all gonna, in the future, if we're gonna do something, we're gonna be like, hey, you know what? Just reach out to Barry, reach out to Jim, reach out to someone on the board, or whatever. If we have an issue, just reach out. Um, you know, this town doesn't want any more of this. We just want to move on from, with everything. Um, we need to work as a community, and whether it's boards, whether it's, whatever it is, we just need to get back to, this is Newport, and we need to do things the right way, and what's best for our citizens. And, uh, yeah, that's, that's just where I'm at. Uh, we just got to get it done.
Yeah. Just to be upfront with everybody, Tim and I met this morning at 8 o'clock, and began talking about this. We had a, there's been a lot of discussion going on about this, from the board level. Jeff North has done a lot of, I think, very important things in terms of examining how we can move, in terms of dealing with the ambulance. Uh, I've done a few things. I know Jim's been out there looking around. Jess been driving back from California with his daughter, so he, he's had time to do. But anyway, it's been a lot going on. It isn't just, had been, Bert, I'm not going to say you were wrong, we, we did take that point of view, our legal point of view. I'm, I'm putting that behind me, okay? I'm saying, how do we move forward with that, with that process? I'm not here to argue regulations. I'm here to try to solve this issue. Okay? Anybody else on your board, Steve, or any final comments?
If I may, I'll speak to the ambulance issue. We put the ambulances out there. We looked at this years ago.
Yeah.
Back in the later mid 80s. And it was too far out of town. Our response times with an on-call crew, which I understand we're still working on call crews, by and large, it would add, it would double your response time to the patient's location, which could be life threatening.
Could I comment to that?
Sure.
Steve, would you mind if I commented?
Yeah.
Uh, that was never the case. I don't know how that got out there. We have two ambulances that are over here at all times.
I know that.
Over there.
They're the on-call.
You enjoy this, don't you, Jeff? Correcting, correcting the new chair. Uh, but anyway, we have two.
Yeah.
They're always going to be there. The third is the one we're talking about, and we needed a place to put it. What happens, and we've already talked, Hunter has made this suggestion, and we've talked to the chief, once that first unit goes out, we bring in another unit, that third unit, and they'll come back down here. So we're not cutting down on response time at all. I don't know how that got started, but it did, because it, in any town, that's kind of things go around. Uh, and, so that was never our, never our intention.
The MP will accept that answer.
Yeah, okay, good, good. I was a hall fireman.
Yep.
Yeah, when we, we didn't climb in any cab, we stood on the back, in the middle of winter with our hands.
Aren't you glad those days are gone?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we're still.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's take it from a lay spent point, right? Okay, you've got three ambulances, and you're taking two bays, 80 feet long, for an ambulance? Can you see that? It looks facial long.
Can I, can I just make another point? In that, it's part of the discussion, we've already hit that as a board. What we didn't do, we don't put things out in the public maybe the way we should. Okay? Part of what we were looking at was, okay, let's talk with the, with the school board. They take one bay, we take one bay. Cause that's, that's what we need. Actually, we, we could use both bays, we can fill them with equipment, okay? But is that better than filling it with buses for kids? My comment at that point is no, it's not. Okay? So, you know, that was our stance. The letter was our stance at the time. I did not realize it. I, I signed it. Going to tell you right now, I signed it. Okay? Uh, I didn't realize it wasn't going out on Town Letterhead, or, I didn't write it. The lawyer wrote it. Wish the hell, excuse me, I wish that the lawyer had signed it. Hunter was willing to sign it. I said, I'll sign it. So blame that on me, if you want to. But, at this particular point, we need to solve this situation. And I appreciate what has been said by the board. Um, I, I don't want to get into the weeds in this whole thing. I want to keep it so that when, by the time we are, at some point, very near, you're not going to be kicked out. I'll tell you, I'll fight that like hell. You're not going to be kicked out at the end of this month. Okay? I'll fight that. I know other people will fight it. But we need to come to some resolution about the whole aspects, whether it's, well, $1.99, you still got to sign a lease, which we haven't ever had, by the way. Okay? Uh, we need to sign a lease. So, we're going to have to work together on that regardless. Jeff?
Couple comments. Uh, it was mentioned, we needed two bays for just one ambulance. Jim mentioned the need to consolidate a lot of equipment, that's another.
I just said that, yeah.
Spaces. So the, the other equipment's going in there, and probably we could use more than two bays for consolidating equipment. Uh, another thing that, you know, we're trying to do, we initially had that meeting between two selectmen, two school board members, town manager, and the superintendent. We, we put forward a proposal, pole barn, to cover the buses, so snow wouldn't fall on them, because that, at that time, was the big concern from the school district, to keep snow off the buses. We also, you know, offered up $25,000 toward an estimated $100,000 cost of a pole barn. You know, we basically knew back then, in mid-April or so, that there were contractors who could build it and have it up before snow fell. We also offered them the use, the school board and the bus people, and their mechanic, the use of the town's mechanic bay to work on their buses, because I've been hearing people say, we're going to make their mechanic work in the dirt outside under a pole barn. And that's a position, I think, that's been promoted, I'd say, from the school side. Because our opening, I, just let me finish. My, our, our opening position, our opening position included use of the mechanic bay for working on the school buses. There was never any interest.
That's history, not now. Not now. For matter of fact, the mechanic.
I didn't finish, Bert.
Yeah.
We let you finish.
Yeah, I mean, first, first.
I'm back on, because it's not true.
I'm saying that was our position, that was what was presented, whether it was brought back to the rest of the school board, that we don't have any control of. And that was our opening position. I think it was also mentioned that, in talking to the school board members, it was specified, this is our starting position, let's negotiate. I think in that letter that Barry signed and sent.
Signed, I didn't write, Dr. Heather.
Of course. You know, we said, you know, we'd be willing to look at one bay for our need, you have one bay. You know, so we put out two positions, and have not had any response back. So it's, we're sort of like negotiating.
Okay.
With no, but let me also say, in moving forward, you know, we need to start looking forward and not go over the history. I mean, it's, you know, it's where we've been.
Which, you know, others pointed out on it, so I'm going to.
Okay.
Can I ask for point of order, please? Point of order?
Yet I would never refuse you. Go right.
We're sitting here listening to two boards debate over a real serious issue about our voting rights.
Yep.
And we're not enough being allowed to.
You are going to be allowed to comment under the open floor.
But you say that, but it's going to be at the end of the evening. I think this needs to grow into that we can make comments.
No, we're going to leave it just the way it is.
The opinions that you're making, because it sounds like you, you guys are cutting deals between each other, and that's what your plan is. And we want a chance to say.
You will have a chance, okay? Believe me, we're not trying to cut deals.
We don't want to hear your excuses.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm not, I'm speaking as, I just say one thing, and then I'll recognize you. I'm not interested in going over history. I'm not interested in coming up with who's right and who's wrong. I'm interested in going forward with this darn thing, and get it solved. That's what I am interested in. And I know other members of the board are just feeling the same way. Okay? Now, so I really don't want to go back and get into the weeds of this thing. Did you want to say something? Well, we're still with the board. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. You don't want to get back into the weeds. Well, you know, if in fact, you had have thought about getting into the weeds in the first place, you would not have been up your ass in Alligators.
Not helpful. Thank you.
So, that all, that all being said, Jeff's statement, let's go back in history, because history is important. We even, we even, we even teach it in school. So, we had a mechanic, the town did, that was shared with the school. We paid for the hours that were spent and parts on, on school vehicles, in your bay. In later years, that was taken away. The mechanic, at one point, said, bring your bus in, regardless. Who made the prohibition that we could not be there in the first place? It wasn't the board, I don't think. But still, if you don't want to talk about the weeds, you don't know the internal feeling of someone who knows the history. Steve is relatively new. We had the bays, we had access to a mechanic, and got our stuff repaired. Now, we have to go and pay S.G. Reed. Now, think about this for a minute. S.G. Reed runs a business, he has to pay property taxes, and pay his employees, et cetera, and a profit. So we pay a much higher rate for our repairs now, because of that change. And we're still in that. So all of the whippings that we have gotten from the town are the history that needs to end. And if we're going to begin something in the future, it's going to begin with those criteria stated. If we share a mechanic, we share a mechanic, based on needs and repair orders that come in, based on needs. You've got an ambulance that's got to run, and a school bus problem, it doesn't happen for three days, guess what? The ambulance comes in. That's the right way to do it, and that's the community way to do it. That hasn't been happening. The opposite's been happening. We, I will not accept it, whether I'm on this board or not, sitting in this chair. I will not accept that abuse. The bully in town, pushing. I will not accept that abuse, the bully in town, pushing and doing things inappropriate and not timely, not even thinking about our budgeting problems. So you're asking me to web slave claim? Ah, it's going to be awful hard to do, you can't get on your knees and...
I'm asking the board, I'm not asking you individually, I know where you're coming from.
That's right. But I'll always, but I'll be always here to say my piece, regardless of what the audience behind me wants to hear from me.
No problem.
To me, as you're well aware, my feeling for community is mine, and I espouse it regularly.
Third, over six years, I've gotten used to that process, so, you know, it's okay, it's okay. Steve, we're going to kind of pull back here for a minute, under, when we get to action items, I'm going to ask the board for reconsideration, vote, vote. Is there anybody on this board who has more to say?
Yes.
Quickly. Because I'm, I'm determined that we can meet with that person. If we can't, we can't, but I'd like to, okay? And I want to make sure you people get a chance to speak. No, there's no hope, you will. I'd like to. Go ahead.
Okay. I just first want to say, I don't remember getting a response on our ridiculous pole barn idea. I thought it was a great idea, it's an expandable building that can be expanded over time. I think the ninety-nine-year lease on what has been voted on is ridiculous, because a child born today will not see the end of that lease. And ninety-nine years from now, who knows what this town is going to look like? I think we're, we're living too much like what's happening today. We have to look at our future. And then last, I want to hear suggestions. You know, we're here to heal, we're here to move forward in this process. Instead of keep turning back and rehashing what's already been said, let's get some ideas on the table and actually start moving forward. Thank you, Barry. Yeah, I yield.
Barry, can I say something too?
Oh, yeah, Jeff, I keep forgetting you're in Europe, I see you out there.
Oh, boy.
I'd be drinking water that you were drinking, yeah.
Hey, I just, I just like to say that, that I know from speaking to some board members individually and, uh, uh, community members, that, that, I, I think this can move forward, and I think it will, is going to be, quite possibly put us right to where we were previously. It's just kind of getting to the table, and I think we'll have possibility, definite possibility for where the ambulance can go. I don't think it's going, we should need to be hindered by that problem of it, and to, to dwell where we currently dwelling in this meeting is just spinning the same wheel over and over again, and we just need to get to a consensus on moving forward and separating out, you know, the ambulance from the buses. And I, and I, I just don't think it's that hard to get there. And I, and I think we can get there, but continually arguing, especially, you know, the way we are right now, is just going to just continually spin. But I, Barry, I, I don't think, you know, from what I heard from you earlier, I don't think we're that far away from something happening here.
Steve, I...
I'll recognize you in a minute.
One, to move forward and kind of start getting this done, getting it done correctly, because I don't think anybody wants to do it incorrectly. You want to do it, do it right, do it in a timely manner. How do you see, what do you want to go? Because honestly, we're not really into the finer points and get this tonight, that just can't happen, right? How do you see your board wanting to interact to get this completed?
I really only have my own individual, right? We haven't necessarily taken a vote on it, other than the town vote, which, as I had mentioned two weeks ago, in the last board's meeting, is, I see it as the town has spoken, like we talked about. And so the expectations of the majority of the citizens that voted was, school keeps that, I mean, the ninety-nine years, I understand that, that, like you said, Mr. Scherer, that that's a long time from now. But I, I think part of that also is in the sense of, let's not mess with that. But at the end of the day, we're going to have to figure out something together, right? Just like they did in the seventies. Because if you read it, the, the town manager at the time said it was a great idea, and it really should pass now that both sides of the coin are coming together for the DPW garage, because it was a joint effort. I don't know exactly what that is, that it was, the school's going to have four of the bays, and it was just a joint effort. Because you can see where the town allocated funds, but I don't, I haven't seen what the school did. So all that to say that, uh, we keep our, our two bus barn, our bays, we make the improvements, we pay the electricity so that the town isn't burdened with that cost, uh, we pay for the heat, we make the improvements, just like we had mentioned for the leasehold. And then in the meantime, if we do need to come up with a better alternative, then we, as a town, because you still need storage, and, uh, is that really adequate? Have we studied the bus barn? Because we could end up getting something to where we can drive the buses through it, and then we have a location where there's personnel actions that can take place. There are different ways that we could go, but currently as it stands, my take is, we have, we had the vote, I understand the difference between the opinions of the lawyers, we don't necessarily want to get the lawyers involved, but we also don't want to end up coming out of it going against the will of the people, saying, "Well, both boards got together and said, forget our vote." So like, there has to be some communication back to the town, to where the town feels that the intent is met of the, the, uh, the article that passed, and also some healing going on, so there's not a perceived animosity between...
So, as the leasehold, are you looking for us to put something together to you without more input? Because certainly we want to, like I said, obviously honor the will of the voters, right? But we need to do so in a correct and legal way to move forward that's going to be in everyone's best interest. So, my question is, is that how...
I got you. Donna, then you...
There is a next step from here that's between there and the lease, if you get what I'm saying. How do you want to accomplish that goal, that meeting? My suggestion and my hope is that we can get together, hammer some of these things out, and actually have a document that we ultimately agree on, that we could then bring to the boards to have them ratified, right? So we can move forward, that accomplishes the goal of the voters. So that's my suggestion, if you don't have one, but that would be my suggestion. Because obviously, there's a lot of minutia, finer points that you just brought up that I, I can't disagree with, right? Because, right? Ninety-nine years, long time, and if we really figure things out, that's not going to lock you into something, not going to lock us into something, that we can both be successful and the taxpayers get what they've asked for, is paramount.
I recognize Donna, but before, I am going to use history a little bit, when we get back. Excuse me.
Can you get moving on? Public in on this?
Donna, you have something you want to say?
Yes, so I know that I've spoken to...
Jenna, you're next.
...to a lot of our board members, and I think that, I think that we need to honor what the vote was. And I, I would suggest to my board, and I know it's ultimately a dead decision, but what I would like to see is that, number one, it's done in open public, because I think the public has to write, the right to know what's going on. Because I fully believe that we're transparent, and this is a very touchy subject, and I think this needs to be in open forum. I would like us to go with the dollar for ninety-nine years. It's, there's been a lot of years that the, that the town has been trying to take the bus barn away from the district, and I think by doing a, a long term, that we at least know that when, when I leave, and Hunter leaves, and all of you are gone, that there's still that sense of security for our students and the people that, that live here in this community. And I think that we put into the lease that we pay our own electricity, our own, our own heat, and we do our own repairs.
I think you've raised some good issues, both of you, Jim has too. I think we need to put together a comprehensive lease. You still got, the, you still have to have a lease, which we've never had, to be honest with you, never had. Still got to have a lease, okay? And whatever the terms of that lease are, whether you like it or not, it's still the responsibility of the board of selectmen to oversee a lease. That's what my reading says, okay?
Well, I was just answering because Keith said you...
But you, you, I heard you, I heard you, and we need to put together that document. We're not going to do that tonight.
The law gives us...
So Jenna, you have something to say?
Can we just have joint meetings for the next couple of months?
Whatever we, yeah, whatever we need to do, yeah.
So I got no problem with that working group being open, public, notice meeting, whatever. But to tie up your working meeting and to tie up our working meeting, when we've got people that want to talk, is not productive, not the best use of our time. So I got no problem with doing it open publicly, right? But we don't need to be tying up our working meetings to get there. I think we can get there in a much more succinct, faster way.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're almost there, okay? And, and I don't want to get, I don't want to retreat. My, I'm talking as me. Is that okay, Bert? Talking as me. But at the same point, we, we've still got work to do. And we're not, I don't think this is the venue to do this. This is our working meeting, okay? With that. So at this point, I will say we need to move on, and we will be taking a vote under action item to reconsider our position, and I will also include in that the fact that the, the bays, you know, I, I want you to have those bays, access to those bays, okay? And not have to worry about that, with that. One more comment.
One more comment. Can your, if possible, can your vote tonight, if you, if you vote, have something in it that says, if you're saying that we can keep it, that will allow us to start some of our repairs? Because we have people that are working in not very good conditions, and we really need to change those conditions.
Well, I'm a little bit skeptical with that, Donna, to be right up front with you. I'd like to have a lease signed, and I think we can do that in pretty short order, and you guys can get going. Okay? Does that make sense?
Thank you.
All right, so, I want to get to the point where you guys can have an open forum. We've got three things to do, and then we're going to get to it. Unless it's the, unless it's the board wants to reconsider and open, go to open forum at this point.
The one thing that's left, Sheriff, person, Barry?
Yes.
If we've got an eviction, that was the second time. So is, if this board votes to do it...
To evict you?
Yeah.
Think it's going to happen.
It wouldn't. Then if the board didn't vote to do it, how the hell did it get done? That's number one.
No, no, that is not what I said.
No, that's what I'm saying, right now. That letter came out, and a letter came from him, that's two times we've been threatened. If the board doesn't agree with that, then the board right now should vote, period. That we will be there after June thirty.
I said we would do it under an action item, and we will, okay? I want to get to that very quickly, go, I know Ed obviously has a lot to say, and other people have things to say. I want to get to that in a timely fashion. Okay, review and approval of employment agreement with Aaron Waterman. This is a policeman who has been hired and going through training at this point, right?
Yes. Barry, do you have an information item?
Yeah. I'm glad to hear you. Let's get this done, and then we'll go to the information item, about, we're going to the dogs, so, go ahead.
So the agreement you have in front of you, we're asking either that you sign it as a board or authorize me to sign it. This is a, an agreement between our, the town and new police officers who are certified. The town incurs some significant expense in equipping them, sending them to academy, and so on and so forth, this is a three-year training reimbursement program, should they read our employment within the three years, it provides them to pay us back on it proportionally basis. And that's all, we, we've done this for several years, we have several employees right now who are in the process, or actually one who's in the process...
Paying us back, yes.
And, and several others that have...
It protects the town.
Yes, that's right.
And also emphasizes the importance of these people to complete the process. So I would take a motion to, to approve the employment agreement and have the town manager sign and deal with any items that come up with this. Is there a motion?
So...
Alvin Thader?
Aye.
Aye.
You should take a roll call vote, so you get, because he's on Zoom, roll call vote is how we do it.
You're correct, thank you, Jeff. I wish you were wrong sometimes.
But it's your, but it's your call. It's your call.
Yeah, yeah. I don't listen to him very often, but he's, he's got a lot of knowledge that I need to know. Okay, so let's take a roll call vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Glad to see you're awake already.
Okay, that's good.
And I vote yes, so it's unanimous, okay? Um, what's that?
Nothing.
A dope talk. We have the dog licensing list. Is she here?
I am.
Oh, there she is.
I'll get back in, this is my work.
Yeah, you guys missed my joke about we're going to the dogs.
Okay, so I laid out on your table before I left earlier, um, a whole packet. So what's different this year is, I've been working with the new police chief, and there's been a lot of, well, there's been a lot of issues with dogs lately. Just today on the scanner, there was a one-year-old that got bitten by a dog, so, yeah, and went to the hospital. So anyway, um, and so we've been, we've been working for a couple of years, well, we've been working since two thousand and fourteen to come up with a way to get residents to come in and license their dogs. It's mandatory by law and by Newport Town Ordinance eighteen. So we've gotten creative, we've done top dog contest, we went from, in the beginning, when I first took over in two thousand and fourteen and started the contest, we went from, we had about fourteen to fifteen hundred dogs on our, in our, um, system, and we licensed maybe half, a third to half. With starting top dog and getting that word out and offering prizes this year, we had a, a, almost twenty-five-hundred-dollar, um, package that we gave to our three winners and then six additionals. That's really made a huge difference. So as of, well, I just looked it up a few minutes ago, we have to date one thousand one hundred eight dogs licensed for the year. So on this warrant that I'll present to you, you have packets, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it ahead of time, um, it gives you the RSAs, it gives you a copy of, um, what the ordinances are for the town. So what I'm actually going to give Barry, and then he can pass it out, is the actual warrant. So there are, as of this afternoon, two hundred and sixteen dogs on there. So what that's a breakdown of, we, I've been working, like I said, we've been working really closely with the new chief, um, and we decided, because twenty-twenty was so nuts, and we were so busy, um, over and above our normal hours, um, we decided anything two thousand, uh, twenty-twenty and back was, we were going to archive, and we weren't going to worry about it. So on this warrant, there are twenty, two thousand and one unlicensed dogs. All of those are VET pending licenses, which means we've got an Arabian certificate from the vet that says this dog is owned by this person, resides in this town, so there are twenty of those. Twenty-twenty-two has seventy-six, and twenty-twenty-three has a hundred and nineteen. So compared to years past, when there's been hundreds, um, we're, we're doing good, we're, we're getting there. So what this warrant is, and you all have copies of it, so you can take a look at it, that's the official one. So what the...
Are you asking us to sign it?
Yes, so what the plan is this year is, um, I have letters ready to go in the mail tomorrow morning. All two hundred and sixteen residents, dog owners that are on that list, are going to get a, a letter, and it's basically stating you have until July fifteenth to come into the town clerk's office, license your dog. As of, fifteenth is on the Saturday, so as of that Monday, civil forfeitures will take place, um, so that's a twenty-five-dollar fine, and the police department will be going out and giving warrants at the doors. It is my understanding that the intent, even though it says in the law that they may seize dogs, it... dogs, it, the intent is that is not gonna happen. We don't want a whole ton of dogs. They're looking to get people to license their dogs. So if you don't do it by the 15th, you will, at some point thereafter, get a officer at your door with a letter to appear in court. I believe you'll have another 15 days beyond that to come in and take care of it, otherwise that's, so that warrant, go ahead and sign if you will, and that can either go to the town manager or to go to the police department, they know it's coming, or it can come back to me, and I can give that to them tomorrow, so.
So you're not asking for a vote, you're just asking to be signed, sign the warrant?
Correct. So what that is, is that's a warrant for the police department to act on all dogs that are not licensed within the town as of July 15th. So by law, the 21st is the deadline for me to give you the list, you as the board, and for you to act on that warrant, so.
Good.
Okay.
I looked up, make sure my name wasn't on that. Go ahead.
Can I ask, can I ask you how many of, of dogs are in account, how many are unregistered, how many are registered, just to get an idea of?
So 1,108 currently are licensed, 216 currently are not. So.
All right, so about 40%.
1,300 dogs.
Correct.
Two things, one, we have to, two, so if the intention is not to seize dogs, why are we following RSA 46614 instead of just the town ordinance, which doesn't include the seizing of dogs, and gets us to the same point? I won't vote for seizing of dogs or picking and choosing what part of the law we follow or don't follow. Either we follow our ordinance, chapter 18, which covers the citation and collecting the fees and things of that sort, but doesn't pick and choose what aspect of RSA 64614 that we want to enforce and choose not to enforce.
Okay.
But if we choose to enforce 100% of our ordinance, doesn't include that part. So we have historically always enforced RSA, uh, correction, chapter 18 of our town ordinance.
So all I can say is this is the warrant that is authorized to be given. So if you would like amendments to that, I can.
I'd like to, I'd like to see us reconsider that in the next meeting. I think, you know, Jim, you bring up a good point, so at this point, I'd like to put that on the agenda for next meeting and talk about, to me, it makes sense. We don't want to, we don't want to create a dog town. We don't want to have all kinds of dogs that we've gotta pay things for, just.
And I've got you. Thank you. So, thank you. What is this?
Hmm?
There's a four question.
So anyways, there is, well, I don't have it all.
Okay, so we'll take this up next meeting, and we can talk about that chapter 18 a little more, so you're both, we're all more prepared for that. There was a question in the audience about this.
So audio, video, if you have questions, and it's Jack.
Uh, Jack, what's it? Where is he?
I just had a quick question, if any of the dogs on that list had been checked to see if they passed.
So we've done the best that we could to, we, so to date, just this year, since January, we've sent out, well, about 32 emails to those residents who have email addresses. We send them monthly, starting in January, we send them weekly, starting in March, we send them bi-weekly in April, May, June, with notices on them. We also send out reminders in March to your mail that says, and it says in everything, please let us know if your dogs are deceased. So that's the, that's the best way that we can find out is owners need to call us. The only thing that veterinarians are allowed to give us is the rabies vaccination information. Anything beyond that, veterinarians are not allowed to share that with the clerks, which would really make that a lot easier.
Correct, you had a question?
Thank you.
I have a statement and a question. I am on that list. I am a conscientious objector, and we've got puppies.
You got what?
We've got puppies. That's her name. And we've spent $800 recently to keep her alive.
Trying to do the same with my dog.
She doesn't bother anybody. She's never, we've never had any dog problems with any of the dogs we've ever had over all of these years, and I've been here since 1976, okay? So I say to myself, okay, I take care of, we take care of our animals, all of them, and we pay that $800 fee. And we take care of our dogs. And we are the only ones that get listed to her, to you, to enforce. All of those who don't take care of their dogs, you don't know them. And there's a lot of them out there. So it is a poorly done statute, one that I will not, no dog, surrender to, period. It is ludicrous, it is wrong, and go to my records, vaccinations is the only thing that they can give out, and they gave out today, so my dog gets vaccinated. I've done what the law requires, except for paying a penalty, because I won't come and get a dog license for a dog that never goes out loose, period. So that being said, we're having fun, but.
To the members of the town, that was Rick Spalding's opinion. I would encourage you not, you know, to necessarily follow that, but he has a right to say it.
He's got a good point. There are a lot of people that own dogs that don't register, don't vaccinate.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. Yeah, that's, that's the purpose of this process.
You can't, you can't do anything to change that.
Well, we're trying. We're trying, we think, yeah, so, okay.
And just as a quick point of information, so dog licensing isn't unique to New York, New Hampshire, New England, it's worldwide. There are very few places in the world that don't license dogs, and it's a public safety issue.
Yeah, okay.
Definitely.
Go ahead.
Don't say it. Don't say it.
2024 petition article, you become.
All right, uh, thank you very much. Heritage Commission appointment, Andrea Thorpe, regular member for three, is all entertain a motion?
Recommend we appoint Andrea Thorpe to the Heritage Commission for a three-year term to expire June of 2026.
Alwes and Fager? Oh, no, we need to take a roll call vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Did you know what you were saying, yes, too?
No. Yes, I.
Okay.
Walked by video for a second.
All right, thank you. Uh, and I vote yes, so it does pass unanimously. Accept state of New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety grant and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. Can you briefly tell us about that?
Yes, this is an equipment grant offered through the state to the town, for the purchase of highway safety equipment, in this case, two of the speed monitoring radar signs that we have, and a number of other smaller items. They require you to authorize me to sign on the other half, for if you will.
So I would take a motion to accept this highway safety grant and authorize town manager to sign all related documents.
Second down.
No, you make the.
You make the motion.
Right.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, Keith, good.
Thanks, I'll let me in.
Yeah.
Question.
Yes.
Is, uh, we seen the first one of those out on Sunbury Street across from the cemetery? Is that?
Yes, that's one of the.
Yeah.
My understanding, my understanding is.
What's that?
They saw both of them today.
And they, they do report data for further analysis.
Where's the second one?
Yeah, they, they are intended to be mobile, so they might not start out. Might not end up where they start out, so I don't know.
Good street to put it on.
Okay. Guys, I'm 74, I forget things every once in a while.
So, see, it's good that you have your reminder.
No, it isn't. Okay, approval of USDA loan resolution and authorize town manager to sign all related documents. Hunter, could you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, Mr. Brown is in the hallway, I think, waiting to come in, and he's gonna give you an overview. This is a similar kind of request that you could authorize.
Yep.
Or sign.
Thank you.
Paul? This loan is from the USDA, it's part of the $23 million that was approved at town meeting. This comes with a six, six and a half million dollar grant also. It will be a 30-year loan, the interest rate locked in at one and a half percent. And we need your authorization to move forward. We'll be sending that out to the bond council, they'll need to approve everything, and then we'll go back to USDA.
So, and this is for wastewater treatment? Yeah, we didn't say that. Okay, wastewater treatment, and it, so it's a loan and a grant?
You said, this is the loan portion.
Yeah.
You actually approved the grant.
Yes, we did.
Worked last week.
Yeah, yeah.
Who managed to help you.
So I need a motion to move on approval.
I'll make the motion that we approve the USDA loan resolution and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents for the grant of $9,999,000. Lost the number.
I did, too.
That was it?
I'm sorry.
That's right? Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
Go ahead, second?
Second.
Did I understand that that was a, for a 30-year bond?
Yes.
Okay, so let me show.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Your second, Keith?
My second?
Second is it? Jeff?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Jeff North?
Yes.
Jeff North?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, and I vote yes, so the vote, the approval passes, okay? I'm gonna put off at this particular point the opening of the bids, we'll do that after the open forum, and we'll move at this particular point to the open forum. This is a chance for anybody who, anybody in the public who has items that they want to bring up, be willing to entertain that. And I know you've been willing to, ready to talk, so.
I didn't forget what I was gonna say. I know you wanted to keep me on, so I would.
That was part of my plan, it, thank you.
I heard your arguments and the truth, and both boards considering what we're gonna do, and we're gonna try to make this right, and we're gonna do all that sort of thing. A lot of those things have already been brought up, you've had these debates, and you hopefully have some valid points, some of them are up and down, that's, that's something you need to deal with down the road. As far as what, what transpired, though, you're talking about an illegal bid, it's, you say that, that you can't manage properties, and it's true, you said, you can't, can't receive anything on a donation, which they get nothing in return, and that, that's valid by, I think, an RSA. Numbers don't mean anything to people, but that's true, but that's not the case.
Right.
As stupid as you make it sound over there, but illegally, we, that was in the warrant article, okay? And incidentally, there's some privilege that you can move monies down the road within a five-year period, so look into that if you're talking about you're not satisfied with that. So it isn't binding for the rest of your life. And I won't get into that tonight. You don't, I didn't come in to listen to the debates between you two, because you've had these debates. And yes, you probably, you definitely should get together, conscious for that, for a lot of things, because you've been at it, had it hard with each other, for whatever doggone reason, we don't know the public, because that's all we hear, your bickering and everything. It's, it's dead wrong, because it's my money, and it's these people's money. The reality is.
Money, too.
If you felt, if you felt there was an article, it, it is perfectly outlined in the proceedings of SB 28, if the substance of the article is questionable, the select board can't fix it, they, they can, they can, they could decide to remove it, but they, that's not advisable, because it's the will of the people and those that write the warrant. So they should sit down and says, if they could take the, and they can at that time go after legal counsel, we'll see if it's legal. Well, we sat here one night and went over every topic, every, every article, and that was in there, and that was never brought up, you never said in one way, concerned about the legality of it. We then went to the deliberation meeting, same thing, nobody, only there was one amendment brought up, and that whole dollar figure was discussed, and the people said, no, they voted the article down, and they went with this. And so, so the vote is, is, you can, I agree with the law, there's no way you can say that's illegal, and you can't say it's not manageable, and it's not enforceable, because you people deal with properties all the time, and some of them pretty shifty over the years, we won't get into that tonight, but they've done quite well with it. The fact is, you turned around after the fact, and you didn't get your way, then you went out, after we left, walked away and said, this is what we gotta pay this year. You just went out and did the attorney thing after the fact. So we paid for that, you just paid our attorney to fight us, to beat the shit out of us, to excuse my language. And that's, that's unexcusable. You people are not listening to us, I've been saying that, I think if you go back to any minute, you've heard me say that you do not listen, and as a group, you don't listen, you're, and tonight, you did a lot of opinion things, and I, and I know that the formats that we put in speak, we're not being heard out here, we're getting slammed, that this is what the public needs better coverage from you people. I've heard a lot of problems about what they say with the, with the town manager. Town manager, I don't wanna hear all that stuff, I wanna listen to that. You're the guys that hire and fire, but you got a problem, it's up to you to deal with that, not us sitting here screaming at him. But you're the people that maybe you can put out something, and you're gonna turn down a vote from us and tell us that it was invalid, regardless, now that you're sorry. And you don't have the right, by the way, neither board at this point, in my opinion, in our opinion, that we voted in, has the right to renegotiate any dollar figure at this point. It's a done deal. And I don't want boards saying, well, let's see, let's, let's, I, I understand why you're trying to do it behind me, but we said, we spoke, and we said no, like we spoke three years ago, five years ago, in the community center, three times, you said no. You listen to that, all right? And then at that time, you, you felt, you're gonna find your way to do it, and you went after money, and then you didn't have quite enough money for the ambulances, so you said, I don't know, we'll put them down with the bus for that, but that's, we won't fess to that. That's not what the argument is. The argument is, we spoke, and I, I, it's just so frustrating that if we can't trust you to honor our vote, you should put your keys to the door, right on that desk light, and, and put in your resignation, because it's not fair to us. We came out and forced whatever that number was, we felt we did the right thing, and people walked away, there was, what's that thing about reconsider, you're talking about you reconsidering, there was a vote not to reconsider that, and I said, you can't reconsider the vote, it's valid, it's good for the, for our lack of concern forever, unless you could come up with that five-year courage to negotiate dollars. And the day you don't do it, you don't belong up there representing us, because you're not hearing that. You never brought this legality up, you never did, went through the proper procedure to say, let's, let's consult with an attorney first. You just chose to make arguments, which they're all, I won't get into that, they're all valid, but it was the wrong procedure, so I'm, I'm telling you, it's, we made, we voted, and we want to keep that one, I'm sorry, that's what I like to say.
Will be, Ed, I was gonna come in and I can resign, honestly.
You did it once.
Yeah, yeah. You, you're welcome.
If you read it like that, if you read it like that, you don't listen to the will of the people.
I listen to the will, don't tell me I don't. I listen to the will of the people, and I'm tired of you saying that, you say it every meeting.
Sorry, I have to keep saying it, then, I'm not gonna listen to it.
I'm telling you, I listen.
Well, I don't mean just your opinion, you're a board, you know one.
And we talk, yes.
No one board has the right to act upon himself, and that's also in the statute, and you know that, it has to be a group decision, so.
I don't like fighting with you, Ed, because I like you.
I don't either, but you're all patriots, you guys are willing to serve, I, I respect that, I totally do, but you gotta, you gotta respect our custom.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Anybody else? Kathy?
I'm gonna be changing the subject quickly for a moment.
This is open to, this is open forum.
What's been really worrisome for me is the biggest project next to the wastewater sewer player, and I said town, and you say school, is the VOTAC, and I heard we've run into the snag, and I want to humbly ask, because it kinda falls to the town, because you have the grant, and I've been following that, that we make this the number one priority. grant, I've been following that, that we make this the number-one priority. I have some experience with a very small project on Main Street with federal and state grants, and I know how costly that can be. And how do we get, get creative about giving the school their building permit? I mean, I'm not involved, so I may not be saying the correct thing, but I heard information that Manchester had a problem following my business.
Yes, they did.
And they found a workaround. We need to find a workaround. I listened to the school meeting, and I'm only repeating what I hear, but I want to bring this as a citizen, and I want to say, this has to be the number-one priority. We have to get that permit. I don't want any delays. I don't want any risk of funds. And I know I wouldn't, that's been trying, but unfortunately, a workaround didn't work, so.
We've got to find another.
And it has to go way to the top, way to the top.
And it's got to be done fairly soon.
Yeah, I want to hear.
Really soon.
I want to hear that Ed can relax, he has a building permit, and as soon as he needs to.
Well, there have been things holding it up. State being a major mover in this thing in terms of parking, things of that nature. Am I right, Hunter? Better. Yeah, and, but we need to, we need to move, and we need to work, again, this is another point, we need to work together with that. I mean, I know Ed's got some things he needs to get done. We need to get those done, and then we can talk about any, any workarounds we can do. Yes?
We're waiting for the town. We can't do anything that's in town.
It falls on the town, goddamn.
Would you please wait to be recognized? Thank you.
Everything falls on the town. We can't even have a conversation with the.
Then the town will do what we need to do. Thank you, okay?
No, I appreciate that.
We'll do what we need to do.
I appreciate that.
Because it's got to get done. As most of you know here, no, you don't, but I was principal up here. I was, I thought, always thought, still do think, that's the shining part of our school system, and we need to make sure it continues. You know, I, at one point, they were talking about closing it, and I was going eight about that, you know? Keep it going, and we need to get that done. I agree, Kathy. We'll get something done. Yes, ma'am?
So I guess we should start off by saying, as a large taxpayer in this town, I'd like to express my opinion.
Go right ahead.
I actually don't come down on this sort of, on either side. I believe in outsourcing things. I believe in outsourcing maintenance, possibly putting up another garage, but I think, unfortunately, I watch every single meeting, school board and the, this board. The lack of transparency and the constant, like, ulterior motive behind most moves has created that you do have us here now. It's not being riled up on Facebook. I watch every single meeting, and I think now you have to kind of do it with our supervision. You've earned that, because you now are going against a vote. You did sign a letter. I applaud you for standing up for your change of heart, but you need to be careful what you sign. You have riled us up. So I think as educated people, we want to be here, we want to be heard. So now you get to do it in front of us all. We'd like to see it done in public. I'd like to see what happens with the ambulances, what's being built next, who's going where. I want to see it all, because like I said, I actually don't really come down on it one way or the other, but I want to know what's happening where.
Thank you.
That's my bottom line.
Would you give your name?
Mallory Tetra.
And you're resident of town?
Newport, yes. I home seven.
Get that Riley?
I graduated from Newport High School when you were the principal.
No wonder you're speaking so nicely in a class. That's good, good. Yes, get a couple of gentlemen in the sunglasses.
Rod Ward, you've heard North Main Street. I'm also your freshman appropriate. Right now, the ambulance situation, is that because of what's going on with the building of the community center? Okay.
I didn't say any, I didn't answer.
I have a three-door garage. I got a corner that I can clear out, and you can put that ambulance there temporarily. I can build the plugs wherever needs to be done. I have my own tools that will be watched over. If you have nothing to do, or you can't put that ambulance anywhere else, it's going to my property. I don't care what any lawyer says. If I have to charge you fifty cents, fine, that's only going to be legal.
We'll take it.
That's your option right now. You come to my house with that third ambulance, it'll be taken care of.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Love that idea.
Gentlemen in the back with the hat.
Tom Gallagher, thirty-seven Oak Street.
Hi, Tom.
Hey, look, who vetted Article twenty-one and put it on the ballot?
I believe it was Mr. Spalding.
So Article twenty-one was vetted, and they said it was, there was no problems with the language of putting it on the ballot?
None.
Want to explain that?
No.
And the attorney now says, it's his opinion that it's not valid, and you can ignore the vote. Is that correct? All right, I'm going to suggest that you have the attorney post his opinion on the town website, so we can all read it, right? And I'd like to take that opinion down to the Secretary of State, the State of New Hampshire, along with our RSAs, and see if he agrees.
Okay.
All right?
We aren't going to, well, I hear you. I'm not going to say that we're going to do it, but certainly we give that consideration. Thank you.
All right.
John?
John Lund, North Newport. I think that just, just following up a little bit what Ed said, seven hundred and one people said a dollar. I don't think that you should be, you should be refinancing this, that however you may feel it should be appropriated or distributed, the cost, the town has basically said the cost should be borne by the town, and that, and that any lease cost should be borne by the town. That's, that is what that article was stating.
Thank you, John. I'm looking for new people to speak. Yes, young lady in the back.
Rebecca Nelson, resident of the town. Is it a possibility, this is a question, is it a possibility, since both boards are here, that you can set a meeting date for a joint meeting to discuss the lease?
Anything is always a possibility.
I would like to suggest that you do so.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I got you, I got you, bro, I'm just waiting for all the people to speak. Yes? I tried for six years, but I haven't been able to do it.
I work for the school district now as a facilities guy for almost five years.
Your name, please?
David Childs.
David Childs, okay.
And, you know, I was listening to Jim earlier, and he said, you know, Madonna and Mr. Hunter are both gone, we're still going to be here. Ten years.
Well, I'm seventy-four, I bet it won't be here.
You probably won't be, but anyways, you know, when I started working at the school, the town took care of the athletic fields.
Yes, they did.
The town, you know, flushed out the system at the end of the year, and last year, we had to go out and purchase mowers, because the town just stopped mowing the fields. And when I called to have the irrigation blown out, they said that they can't come there, it's private property. So we had to go spend more money to have someone do the fields, and I'm just curious where the, where we came from one entity to two.
I don't have the answer to that.
I can tell you something.
I don't have the answer to that. We're usually pretty good at blowing things out, so, you know, we'll see.
That was, that was once discussed on a.
I'd recognize Ed Carr. Go ahead, Ed.
Can't wait for you. When Hugley was on that same committee years ago, before he had the heart attack, when we were developing a master plan, and that was one of the topics, is jurisdiction of those fields, and it just kind of never did get fizzled out, so. Anyway, still the town, maybe, you know, ownership is town, and.
You're saying the town owns, owns those fields?
Along those lines, yeah.
I don't think so.
Talks about her soccer field, and she's right, but they ain't hers. It belongs to the town, everybody, so it was discussed that.
Okay.
It's a community.
Thank you.
But go back, let me finish my comment. Oh, you don't want to?
No, I'm going to let you.
I came in begging.
I like you, I'm going to let you go.
I did the right thing when I brought up the fact of that. And I'll go to the grave saying that you, the town put a suffered severely, that they built on that, the school. But doggone it, we need the damn thing, and there's no way you can't come to a compromise on that. Now, I know we can't use the horse park, and I know you gave away the well park because of the, has to do with all the water and the health stuff that I get, I guess I heard the other night. You got a piece of land passed the airport that's, that's town owned, there's about five and a half acres there, that borders the other side, on the high side of it. I'll find that, whatever you call that runway thing, there's a piece of land right there. Anybody researched that?
Yeah.
You have?
I believe you did, didn't you? Or did you not?
It's two eighteen, over on Corbin Road, on the other side of the road before the bridge, out behind the airport, piece of land, by the way, which we don't need, because nobody owns an airplane around here that I know of. If they do, then you pay your taxes, but.
Thank you, Ed. And when you go to your grave, we'll make sure we put that on your grave.
One last thing I must say, then. You should know, you can't negotiate with them, let them, let them be permitted to begin that process, because it can't get resolved.
It's in the back of my mind.
Yeah, very well. Well, if you promised me that night you would, and if you ride around in a fire truck, I don't owe you a mic fire if it takes you this long.
Gee, thanks, Ed, I appreciate the thought. I just hope your house never catches on fire. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just want.
Oh, wait a minute. Wayne has not spoken, so I'll let Wayne, then I'll come to you, Ed.
Sure.
And then I'll go to Bert.
Thirty-nine Pine Street, Newport. I got three questions. Number one, did you use our town attorney for that information?
No.
Okay. Got a name on it? No?
Yeah, yeah, I got a name. What is it, what's the attorney we used? Johnson?
Or Donald Johnson.
Croydon Johnson.
Croydon Johnson, okay. Number two, I see in Croydon, they've just changed the speed limit on Cash Street to twenty-five miles an hour, because it's a street.
Cash street or cash road?
Cash street.
Street?
The one that goes around the back side. They just, they got the rights from the state to be able to change that to twenty-five miles an hour. I would like to see something done with Pine Street. Now, that is thirty miles an hour, and I don't think this had, I'm probably one of the only ones that do thirty. I got passed on, on the road today, you know? Somebody passed me, and that's, you know, I don't like people passing me.
Did you have your little buggy there? You could have erased it?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I had my little pickup.
All right.
But I would like to see if that would be changed to, see if they could be changed, twenty-five miles an hour. If you're driven through the area, I don't know, you know how many people walk that road or jog that road? Somebody's going to get killed out there. It's going to get ruined. I mean, cars fly by all hours of the day and night. It's really fast, okay?
So I would ask Hunter to put that in his to-do list, and, and look at that, and bring that back to us about what he does.
Because that's, everybody classifies that as the Newport bypass, okay?
Okay.
So they don't have to go downtown. I would really like to see it changed one way, then everybody have to go through downtown, see what we've got down downtown. Okay, my third question is, what are we, what are we doing with, you know, back when I was a kid? That was a long time ago, you know, I know that, but I had to register my bicycle. Nah, you stop and think about it. There's more bicycles out there that got more power, and they cost as much as my hot rod.
No, it doesn't.
They do. He gets a hot rod. You know, and these things are battery-operated, electric bicycles, and they fly up and down the road, through the main section of town and on the back street. Something ought to be done with catching them with registration. You know, you turn around, and, you know, everybody says, if you don't pull over, and I got this up in, up north, I blew my air horns on kids that, and not more kids, was growing up.
It scared the death out of them.
Well, they wouldn't pull over, so you could go around them, you know? And so I did that, and I got turned in. Well, the thing is, they could see my number plate on the back of my truck, right?
Yeah.
Five-five-five, if you remember. What do you do when you, you see somebody that don't stop for a stop sign, or passes everybody through the lights down here? Oh, yellow tights on, you know? A lot of yellow tights out there. But, you know, really, I mean, stop and think about it. That, did you have to register your bicycle when you were a kid?
No.
See, Clamont did.
Go ahead.
Chapter fourteen Newport Town Orders.
It already says that? That we register our bikes?
No one does it, but it's this.
Yeah, we can't get dogs to get registered, so, I mean, we can work on the bikes.
They need to do something.
Yeah, okay. I don't know how we begin that process, or anything of that nature, but Hunter, can you? I've given you too much.
Just.
Go ahead. We'll give it to Paul.
You're making a good point, because I see a lot of different electric vehicles, whether it's a skateboard, bicycle, unicycle.
How about that one, a unicycle, do fifty-two miles an hour by my house?
It goes by my house also, and I thought if you had a motor vehicle, it had to be registered. Because if I'm out in the pond with my rowboat, and I slap my electric trolling motor, now it's supposed to be registered. So what's the difference?
Statutorily, they define the number of horsepower and the number of CCs and a whole host of things, and a lot of this outlined in chapter fourteen of our orders. My big thing is, I would like to see the speed limit changed on Pine Street.
Hunter's going to look into that.
I know we don't have very many offices on a regular moment to be able to set up there, you know, if we get the health insurance.
Might bring Jim out of retirement, let him go sell.
He never give me tickets.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I think one of the things that was on.
Wait a minute, Jeff, we've got, we've got a person. No, but we've got a person I recognize, and I'll come to you.
Okay, yep.
Just for clarification, when I asked for the opinion to be posted and made public, you're saying you'll take it under advisement, you won't give your answer?
Well, I'm not sure. I'm going to be right up front with you.
Okay.
I'm not sure it's legally, that we can legally do that. I don't know. I'll find out.
Can we?
If we can, we'll post it.
And if we can't, let us know right away, so we know, look up, maybe research.
Do you know?
To get that information.
Do you know anything about that? Can we legally give that out?
I don't know, that's a matter of legality. I think it's a matter of set legal business practice. I've never heard of a client disclosing...
That's what I'm afraid of.
It's town, it's town government.
Finish, please.
Be hidden.
We're looking, we're looking more to it. Were you done, Hunter? Did you want to say?
Apparently.
Okay. No, no, were you done?
No. I'm trying to explain that it is, I have never seen it in my career, it doesn't mean anything, and traditionally, the opinion of counsel is not shared with the general public or a composition or anything of that nature, because it is counsel to you. The attorney works for you, as a select worker. It does not work for the town, because there are 6,000 different opinions in the town. So this would be impossible for the attorney to represent all of those interests. He is hired to represent the interests of the select worker. So it would be up to you, that would be highly unusual.
Mm-hmm, I know, I realize that, and that's why I said what I said.
So it's up to you to ask the attorney if he would allow us to post that opinion?
I wouldn't mind doing that at all.
That'd be great. Thank you, I'll hold you to it. All of you.
Yeah. There's five members here, guys. All right, yes, sir. Oh, wait a minute, Cap.
Let her go first.
Go ahead.
I just wanna say that if you were going to use this opinion to ignore the vote of 700 people, I'd better get to read it.
Point taken.
Yeah.
Yes.
If that's an official meeting, you have the lawyer, it has to be...
It was not an official, no, no. It's not an official meeting.
All right, then you got problems.
Well, we always...
That's due entirely to fire.
Go ahead, young lady.
So can I just...
What was your name again?
Mallory Tetra.
Is that you?
Mallory Newcomb.
Newcomb.
I knew you.
All right, there we go. You're the one in my office, oh, no, you weren't.
No, never. Um, I would just like to go back. So can we know what the action items are? Are you going to call a meeting between the two boards?
I've got one more action item.
No, I don't want to have to come back.
Yeah, we've got one more. Actually, we'll get to that next, after...
Okay, and then also the CTE. Is there going to be a meeting? We're gonna follow up on the couple of properties mentioned, or the other 75 town-owned properties? Like, can we know what the action items are for the next meeting? And we'd like to see the follow-up.
I'm sorry.
Or sooner.
Yes. Good questions, Mallory.
Hey, your phone's going off.
I know, I gotta shut it off.
You're the expert.
It was my lawyer, no, it wasn't. Okay, so, thank you. We will get out any information we can, we're gonna get out, okay? I will, I'm gonna be honest with you, right up front, because I try to be, and I try to listen, yeah. The reason, first of all, that was not a regular meeting for the lawyer, okay? That was a non-meeting that we had, which we're entitled to with our lawyer, okay? He was asked to prepare a letter, which he did, on his basis. I'm always concerned about litigation, okay? And so, quite frankly, and honestly, and I could be shooting myself in the foot for saying this, I wasn't gonna release that if we're gonna end up in litigation, because that's our case. When we get to litigation, then we could, everybody gets a chance to see it, okay? That was my thinking. Couldn't have been wrong with that, okay? Okay, Mallory?
Okay.
All right. Uh, yes.
This is a big, unneeded mess. It started with the school, and the select board added fire to it, put more wood on it. There should have been a compromise a long time ago.
Don't disagree.
So in saying that, maybe there can be some wording done, that for five years, the town select board is on probation, and we can come back and vote again in five years to see if we want to re-vote it, you know, if you can nullify that and redo it again, if the voters all go that way. But the town's got, the select people gotta be good people. They can't add fire. There's a young administration over there, and you took advantage of them. You all had ulterior motives, like was pointed out. You've gotten your way before with the rec center. We voted that down year after year after year. Now we're gonna have to pay for it, we're gonna lose tax money. They should have privatized it. The town cannot afford the rec center, the upkeep. And the same thing with this bus situation. Go ahead and sign the lease, then in five years, if you guys behave yourselves, and by saying that, I mean you get down in the bus garage and straighten out their attitudes down there. I was down there for many years, and man, they just get right under your skin all the time. That's the way they operate, and I know that.
Did you get under there?
No, no, no. I went and just talked to Larry and say, hey Larry, you know, you gotta calm this down out there. Because they do. Then they start locking doors and shutting, they hide tools, you know, just to piss you off. And that's gotta stop.
Oh, go ahead, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, I'm good, it's gotta stop. And this, badly back and forth.
Don't disagree, don't disagree with that at all.
And work with the, work with the administration right there.
Yeah, I do want to remind people, this is representative government. So you voted us in, and you could certainly vote us out, to represent you. Now, did we do a good job listening? I'm not sure we did, okay? Hate to say that in front of you. You know, but we're a representative government. We do the best we can. We volunteer our time, and I'm spending too much time with this, with this process, which was part of the reason I was gonna come here tonight and say, take this job and do with it what you like. Johnny Paycheck had a song, I'm not gonna go into it. So, you know, I hear you, I disagree with part of what you said, but you have a right to say it.
Well, probably you disagree with.
Yes, young lady.
My name is Mary Knapp.
I was.
I live at 21 Brookview Road in Newport.
Thank you.
What are we doing tonight? What are we doing tonight?
We're gonna, we're going to take a vote to move away from our position.
So that the voters can have their...
That was my intent.
...and relinquish all of that garbage that was sent out previously, evicting them, and all the stuff that's on Facebook.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's my, that's my opinion. It may not pass.
And I also want to thank the fire department and the police department for the two-car fire that we had at our home.
Oh, yeah.
Very quick response and...
Quick response, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Donna?
Can I just, I just want to ask you a question. Was this, what for the where that last week, we got a cease and desist order on our CTE center?
No, not aware of it.
Okay. They were claiming that we did not have a permit, which we did.
Who was claiming?
We got a call from the town, saying they wanted us to...
I did find out about that this morning in my conversation with, with Tim. Yeah, yeah. So I was unaware of it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was also unaware of this, and so I appreciate having some feedback as to what permits have been requested, what permits have not been issued, why that information was provided, because I haven't heard a single word about it.
Was that rescinded by the person who said it?
So we got, we have our first, we had to pull, we had to bring down our permit to show that we had our permit for stage one. We just got approved for stage two, and stage two says on it that we are not to move forward with stage three.
What would stage three be?
Stage three would be our CTE building.
The building?
Yes.
Okay, and who said you're not to move forward?
Whoever, whoever does the building.
Does that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good information, thank you. May I say something? Yes, Ed. I got you.
On behalf of your physician, I call, I call for your vote right now, so move the vote between you right now, so we can see what you're gonna walk away with.
That generally is not done by the public, it's done by...
Why? What's not public about that information?
Am I correct in that, or am I wrong?
Show me something that says that.
I don't know yet. I don't know.
Let me just see where you stand.
Is that a physician that, because he's calling a vote, I never knew the public picked on a vote.
He won't see what you have to do.
All right, so let's move back to action. Jeff, go ahead. And then Jeff, I know, I'm sorry you fell asleep.
Yeah, it's all right.
I got this guy for you.
If you do that, are you gonna go back to public?
State your name.
Andrew.
We're not leaving public.
Okay. Just want to make sure if we move to an action.
Andrew, you know one of my students, don't you?
I was probably in your office.
Hey, there were two twins who were always in my office, and I'm not gonna mention their names. And they're some of my best friends today, so...
And I'd also like to say that I'm new to this process, I haven't come to a lot of meetings, but I think I will be from here on out, that I'm kinda surprised to hear that there's not some sort of standard procedure for the two boards to meet and work together.
Thank you.
That kinda baffles me, same town. So going forward, guys should get to know each other, become friends, work together often on more than just these issues that are being talked about tonight.
Okay.
I think that's pretty reasonable.
I'll just add a bit, but we do have a joint meeting at least once a year. So this is not a foreign thing.
It sounds foreign.
It does, but it's not. Trust me.
Okay.
Jeff, North.
One more question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to catch up.
I hope that there's an open invitation for each board to come to each other's meetings.
Thank you. Jeff North.
Hi there. So a couple things, just the earlier point that Wayne had made about the speed limit upon Pine Street, that I think it doesn't, it's, that's a really difficult thing to do, because once he said it one spice, that a little bit of a precedent, but, but not to say that that may or may not happen, but I believe that the, there's been either money allocated for a sign, that we're gonna be able to move around town stating some speed limits, some mobile, a mobile sign, which can be helpful in some of these situations. We'll help the police department enforce some of these, sort of a reminder, like, slow down, please, or we're gonna give you a ticket. So that can be moved around to different areas, but certainly some areas have speed limit issues, people keeping them. Another point, just in terms of a lease, you know, and a $99 lease for a year, is it, it may seem like that's a great stand to take in, and I voted for that as well, but it, to me, it was more to make a point that we have a building that's, that's adjoint, say, we look at something like the roof, and a roof needs to be replaced periodically, that a $99 year lease is just preposterous at any level. You can let, for your lease, what does that include? You know, they get a lot more complex than, you know, just, we're gonna do this for a dollar. What happens when you say, okay, well, it's a dollar, but we're not gonna maintain your part of the roof, and then you don't maintain it, and that begins, begins to rot in one section. And I would say that we have two pretty bright boards that I believe are gonna come to an excellent resolution, and we're gonna come up with something that will be well pleased for the citizen of, citizens of this town and for both boards. It's just my feeling, and just to know that these things are more complicated than some people may think in terms of a $99, a $99 year, one-year dollar lease, there's just a little bit more to it.
Thank you, Jeff. And Jeff, behind the scenes, has been doing a lot of work, and I appreciate the work that he's done. Okay, so at this point, with the objection of the board, I'd like to move back to action items.
You're not gonna recognize me in the public?
I certainly will, I'm sorry. I'm old, I forget.
All right, you need to learn that the longer that you make me wait, the more things I add to my list.
Excuse us, note this out, call on Bert first.
I tried, it doesn't work, Barry.
Yeah, I know, you suffered that, Jenna, I know that. Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, I'm gonna start from the bottom and work backwards. The first statement is, you've got a real bad lawyer. Because any lawyer...
In your opinion, we have a bad lawyer, okay?
No, you're really bad.
No, we do not have a bad lawyer.
Yeah, I'm gonna disparage him, he's a real bad lawyer. So you can try and change my opinion, but I've made it clear, so you're trying to change my words...
No, I'm just telling you my feeling.
Well, I guess I get the floor right now, so let me have it, okay? So he's a bad lawyer.
Yep.
You get bad advice. You won't give the opinion now, but you don't give it, you create a pissing contest, which in fact turns into a lot of litigation, i.e. Solomon County. So I don't see why you would not release that opinion, if you have, to us. For Hunter to sit here and say you don't divulge your side, okay, you're going into a divorce. Wayne, I'm gonna divorce you. And so Wayne...
So I gotta divorce you. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm happy. He's passing the buck already. So the two...
Bert, answer one more. Go ahead, Bert.
All right, I guess I'll, I'll leave that alone.
Thank you.
Now, I'm gonna tell you something, obviously you don't know. You know, you could, next year, you could put your own warrant article in there to undo that lease. Did you know that?
Yes.
I mean, you could.
Yes.
That's your only remedy. Because outside of that, you offend everybody. Like I said, the ignorant voted for it, and the smart voted against it, and...
That's not how we feel.
Well, okay, but that's...
We heard the will of the people, and...
Okay, you're debating me now, and it's public forum, you're supposed to listen like you did for everybody else. You wanna fight with me, we'll get into it in good shape, okay? Because I like a good fight. So that being said, you can do that. Now, you want a lease. Forty-five years ago, we went into that building without a lease. There was no lease before 45 years.
You were...
There was agreement between people who thought about community. The exiting town manager stated that clearly when we joined in to be part of that. Even though we didn't join in financially, we made it possible. We joined in as opposed to oppose. So that being said, your lease will be minimal at best. What will you get out of it? We'll get, you'll get what we think is reasonable for us to do. If the roof needs repair, we'll repair our portion. If you do the whole thing, we'll repair that percentage of the portion that you do. Because we need to preserve the town building regardless of whether we are in as a tenant and you think you own it.
I agree with you.
So we will be, have no problems doing those kind of things. Our power, as we've already suggested from the beginning. You have a real big problem with me, because you slept on your rights. When the deliberative session happened, you sat there and did nothing. That was the worst thing you could've done. Because as per all intents and purposes, you consented to it without the objection. So what was it that made you, or who was it that made you not speak? That's the question.
I don't have the answer to this.
Okay, that's fine. I want that lawyer's opinion. And as a board member, if you want to sit down with us, I think you'll find that we won't talk to you without it. Because...
You're saying the school board won't talk?
I think, because I'll do everything in my power to convince them that we being dragged through the razor blades here, and you're acting on a legal opinion that you will not supply to us. All of that being said, I want you to look up there, and you could put on that end of the garage, a shed roof coming up. You could use the existing wall that's there and foundation that's there.
Off to the side. Gunther's already talked to me about that.
So you put a three-sided building up, and you can put your storage in there, and it'd be very cheap. You could do that, like you would do a pole barn, or just put pillow, concrete in for yours, and you'd have it done without all of this to do. Have you thought about that? Did anybody research that? Or is it just the cannibal trying to devour the school system?
I think I've already said, Bert, that we have looked at a variety of things. Jeff knew up before he falls asleep, his eyes closed, looked into that.
That's active fact, that's active fact. I'm going back to the beginning, when you, when you told us, hey, you know, we...
Did anybody research? No.
Okay, so you didn't do it?
No.
It's still, still an option.
That's what I'm saying.
And it's relatively inexpensive, without going through all of this mayhem. And you've not mentioned it. So that all being said, now comes the real ball blessing. The $10,000 per unit isn't gonna happen.
Where's that coming from?
Spring Street. Spring Street. It's not gonna happen. That's 420,000.
Oh, you're, no, you've switched gears then. Now you're talking about Spring Street that you're in business with, you know?
I hesitated just enough to, you know, kind of break that record and go on the next one. It's 420,000 dollars lost to the community.
How come? And you sat right there, and you said, I hope you don't give away the store. You did, when they were there. You changing your mind now?
I did not oppose the $420,000 coming in.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't know what in hell you're relying on for that statement.
You said it. You said, and I wish we could go back, you said...
You're gonna have to go back, you're gonna have to prove it to me, Barry. Because the $420,000 is money coming into you that buys extrapolation of, maybe, maybe if, if the children that were in there, if there are children in there, in the school system, that, that would be a bank that we could draw from. So never me against the $420,000, Barry.
I understand that.
So erase that. And then the CDBG grant problem, which he's very cognizant of, you've got two lawsuits And then, the CDBG grant problem, which is very cognizant of, you've got two lawsuits coming. So, that all being said, as a board, you need to do some serious, serious looks at where Hunter has led us. Because it's now gotten very, very expensive. And it is wrong. And you haven't been served yet, but you'll be served very soon.
Hunter has not led us. He's given direction. And this board needs to step up and think about what the hell we're doing before we do it. I don't disagree with that, okay? But it is, you know, I'm tired of people blaming Hunter for everything. You know, he's done a lot of good things here too, okay? That's the end of that conversation with me, but-
Do you know-
Go ahead.
Are your five CDBG grants have been not followed through on?
That's not true. Go ahead, Hunter, defend yourself.
I don't have any clue what he's talking about. $420,000 is referring to. I recall I have a letter upstairs authorizing and approving that. And it's going, it's making its way through the funding process. We've been awarded that $420,000. The application that got us that award was written by our office. The CDBG that we wrote for the Ruger mill has been approved. I don't, we, my knowledge is no CDBGs that, I don't know what he's talking about.
Okay, then I, I was right here in public, lied to you. Or he has.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one distinction here?
Yes.
I think there's mistake, misunderstanding, this interpretation, this whole lot of stages of how people perceive information. Lying, in my view, only occurs when you are aware of a fact and you misrepresent that fact on purpose, knowingly, willingly, perhaps for your own good. But, you know, we've got $27 million worth of grants. I would offer to you that this town for its size has more grants than any other in the state, in the entire state. Now, there's been some grants that we have chosen not to pursue because we are maxing out on capacity. We only have one or two people managing these grants. And it's really quite extraordinary. People don't understand, these grants are not free. They require endless amounts of recordings and papers and records and so on and so forth. It's almost consuming all of our staff time. So, are there CDBGs out there that maybe we have chosen not to pursue? Probably, because we don't have the time, or it's not germane to this, or not germane to that. I don't know. But I'm unaware of any compliance issues whatsoever that we have with any of our authorized issued grant programs, not a single one.
Thank you.
One of the two of us is misleading or misunderstanding.
Why do you use lying? That's good. Okay. Are you done? Thank you. You know, you always raise some good points, but that's all I'll say.
Well, you see how that comes out.
Yeah, yeah. That's it.
Are you ready to say who's going, you're going to go do your roll call?
Yeah, I am.
Thank you.
So at this point, I'd like to move back to action items, or have you all ready? And so, I would propose that the board reconsider, vote to take back their position that was outlined in the letter sent to Steve Morse at this point. And that we move forward with getting to a point of-
Honor the vote, take it on the vote.
Just a minute, just a minute. I'm trying to straighten this out again, okay? That, in essence, what we're going to be looking at is, you know, you've got two bays. Go about it. But we need to get a lease signed, okay? We need to go forward with the lease. I believe, that's my belief, okay? Not my lawyer's belief, but it's my belief that we need to have a lease according to my reading of 4111. And that lease is managed between the two of us, okay? For that process. So I'm looking for a motion.
Stay with me, just working it out my head down a quarter.
No, bear with you, because I was afraid nothing was going to-
Have you worded it? Make a motion regarding the previous letters advising the school to cease and desist and move out at the end of the month, be rescinded. And that we furthermore jointly work with the school board to enter into the will of the people's vote of a 99-year lease. There are obviously minutia points that we need to deal with to be done expediently as possible.
There, here's a second.
I'll second that.
Good motion. Okay? All those in favor, roll call vote. I'll start with Jeff North, because he's going to go to sleep.
I'll give that an eye.
Thank you. Keith?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
And I vote yes. Okay, so it's four to one. Okay? Okay? And he has a right to be in opposition, Wayne, you know that, right?
We don't always agree on everything.
Yeah, we don't.
We don't agree on nothing.
I got one, Hunter, just on something that was brought up, Wayne, during public forum, the reducing of speed on Pine Street. He referenced Croydon, RSA 26560, I did a little quick research. 26560 is basic rule maximum, and it prescribes by statute how roads are reposed, the types of roads to be posted, and by what speed. And it gives only certain examples of when it can go below 30. So unless that section is within a school zone by the school, the statute does not allow legally for that. So I'd like to know how Croydon accomplished that goal legally. They can put whatever signs they want on it, but it's not enforceable under RSA 26560. That's just my quick read of it, so to help him out with his-
I was visiting Rocky Branch the other day, Nate's been in court for it.
Didn't let him, not a little over there.
Yeah, so you can put whatever you want to enforce it, it's another matter, so.
Kathy?
I was just wondering, you probably can't do it tonight, but I'd like an action item, maybe next meeting, about the building permit or the resolution of a town property.
Thank you. Yeah. I'd be open, Steve, to talking with you and the entire board about how we, how we can move forward on that quickly, because you run out of time. So, if you get any more cease and desist orders from an office in this town, would you please let us know, let Hunter know that?
Absolutely.
Because we shouldn't have been kept in the dark about that. I just, I hadn't found out about it until this morning, Tim told me. Okay?
Eric?
Yes.
Is that it? Date for a meeting?
That's what I wanted to do, yeah. Thank you, Jeff. So, Steve, we need to set a meeting for our next, it will be a public meeting for that. Do you have a, do you have a meeting time? I, I'd like to get it done as quickly as possible simply because in July, I'm officiating at my daughter's wedding, so I don't want anything to interfere with it.
Come on, Nick.
Go ahead.
We can do it during the day, too, if we need to.
So, well, if you do a noticed meeting with a quorum on each side, very difficult to do.
Yeah.
People work different schedules. My recommendation before, when you do it publicly, post the meeting, but representatives from both boards hammer it out.
Steve, what's your reaction to that?
Do it publicly, I don't care. If you get everyone in a quorum, it's impossible.
When's your next meeting? When is our next meeting?
Well, we're going to decide the next meeting, because we generally don't meet on the Fourth of July, so that week.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to meeting if it's two from each board and meeting in an open public forum, but then I think that we should bring that back to both boards.
We have to, absolutely have to.
And that one definitely, I think would-
Because Jim and I have already talked, I mean, you've got the chair, vice chair willing to meet with you, you named two, and, yes, Tim.
Yeah, I think the Bus Bar Network's fine, like the CTE's all in town. You know, there's nothing-
We've got to work towards that, and we actually have a, are we going to have a non, not a non-
We do have a non-meeting.
We've got a non-meeting coming up, but then we'll, we've got to get on that.
Because as we talked earlier, it's going to, it's going to really go bad here soon because we're going to run out of time.
Yeah, we don't want to hold you up.
Right, right.
So, I, Jeff, do you have-
I have a comment on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Certainly, the town has been working to try to solve this problem.
Yes.
The school has with land and moving the CTE building, the natural science buildings. But, you know, we're doing what we can with property we have to help out the school district. I would assume the school district at the same time is following a parallel, of course, to see if they can come up with a solution of their own and not just depending on us. And thirdly, their architect, their-
Go ahead.
I didn't say it.
Their architect on this, on the project, the Valley Brunson, has been involved with the CTE center since before it was built. They know the property, and they probably used their knowledge of the place as part of their, you know, reason to hire them. You know, the fact that they initially planted the building on the south side, you know, and then discovered whatever the problems were, mud, or, you know, property boundaries, and the fact that, you know, sunlight doesn't come through trees to the greenhouse well, you know, to me, that is some errors and omissions on their part that creates a liability where they should be out looking for a solution. Maybe on their own dime, maybe purchase a half acre lot or something somewhere that can then be developed into recreational. I mean, that's, those are two other avenues that I would expect are being pursued also, along with what the town's trying to do, you know, to help them out. And certainly, we've invested, you know, time and money with having our, one of our engineers go out and research the property, you know, the distances from the well and all that stuff, and working up solutions. Now we're trying to work up solutions for parking, it's going to involve State BOP, you know, seeing if they'll allow a crosswalk there for kids to cross Corbin Road right, right after a bend in a lousy location. So, you know, we're doing what we can, you know, and pushing the state as much as we can, but I would certainly hope that we're not the only ones working on this problem.
Steve?
That's my understanding that we, number one, we don't have any property that we can do that for. It's also the understanding that we had back in, I want to say March, that it's as simple as finding a piece of land that's comparable in size, that's not currently designated as recreation, and designating that, and so that's the town's grant. So when they look at the property, it's not on the deed or lease or anywhere else saying that that is encumbered on that, so, or whatever their proper, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't understand the exact language. So, when we had tried to assist, and the state said, hey, this is a town matter, it's not for y'all. We have asked at our meetings if anybody has property that they would like to donate so that we can do it. Because what you're mentioning with parking lots and structures and everything else is to replace the area that was used for ice hockey rink, which hasn't been used in five or so years, I'm not trying to upset my card, but it's been used for a while. So, that's kind of apples and oranges, going from an area that hasn't been used for a while into, because I'm pretty sure we were going to pay some money as well for, yeah, so we had talked about, I hadn't proved anything as a board. And so, I don't want the town to think the school's not trying to help. I mean, we, short of me donating an acre of my property and putting a bench on it and calling it a recreation area, I don't know that there's much that we can do as a school board for this particular grant situation that we're in.
And Ed has been working-
Right.
Diligently.
Yeah, and he's been working with Hunter on that process, so.
I don't want to-
Yes, Hunter? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
When this whole process started, I was in communication with the state, and what they told me is, all you need to do is get one acre, all the town needs to do, so they said to me, all the town needs to do is get one acre of land, call it recreation, put a bench on it, and make bird watching. That's all you need to do. And they, they had said that they could move, we could move forward with it. All we've got to do is have a plan that's in place, and this should not impact any of our changes, any of our renovations, it should not impact any of it, all right? They told, they told me that, they told Ed, my BA, that. And then all of a sudden, there was a phone call made by the town manager, and now it was, we're not allowed to speak to them anymore because it's not school, it's not a school grant, it's only a town grant, it's the town's responsibility to do whatever they need to do for that property. So they're not even allowing us to have conversations with them anymore.
Who's state?
This, the state.
Okay.
The state that Hunter's been working with. And so, all of a sudden, we've been pulled out of it. I have asked if we could have a meeting, and I spoke with Hunter about this, if we could have a joint meeting where we could bring in the person to have that conversation so that way both boards have the same information. Because I've been given one set of information, and Hunter's telling us something totally different that, that we heard. And so, we don't know what is fact and what is fiction, right? We don't know what's been going on. What I do know, one of the things that I do know, is that I was told that in May, the, Hunter was told in May that that property was not usable for anything.
The property that he did?
Yes. Ed found out last week. So the, even the conversation there is not moving forward. And this is something that, that we were told from the state that would take roughly two weeks, and now we're going into like, what, three months? And so we don't know what's going on. And I just, I know I received an email, I asked, I said, how are things going? And Ed just said, I have nothing to report.
Hunter?
Yeah, there is, there is the having this conversation evolve into a he said, she said situation, is that I have spoken with the state directly, I can only tell you what they told me. They explained to me as the grantee in this matter, that we have to ultimately agree with whatever is proposed. Their requirement says, they explained it to me, was the property has to be of like size, equal or greater value, and must not have ever been a recreational used prior to that, and it has to be similar in functionality. So those are the four criteria that we understand we have to meet.
So the key issue is that functionality?
Yeah, may I make my point of order?
Who's talking?
It's about, it's about something completely different. Tapping fingers on the things is making the microphones go like this. Somebody's been coming at me.
Somebody, that was me.
Thank you very much.
So, we understand that in, in essence, there's four criteria that must be met.
Right.
And if you think about this, it makes some sense. The town, who knows when, has given a grant to develop the property-
Right.
-north of the school. It's a good-sized piece of property for recreational purposes. So if you need to take an acre away from it, you are compromising or you are changing the deal that you originally made with the grant to work. So they want, if you're going to, I'm making this up, if you're going to take an acre of recreation property out of the deal, you have to put an acre of recreation property back somewhere that's of like value, like size. Why in the world would I like to take an acre out and put in a quarter of an acre or a fifth of an acre? It really can't be used for anything but bird watching when it used to be a football field. That doesn't really, you know, pass muster. So, it was understood whenever we started this conversation that I'd be working with Ed. Ed and I call each other once every couple of weeks or so, don't hold me to that, might be one week in one situation, it might be two weeks in another situation. And he tells me what he's doing, and I tell him what I'm doing. Last conversation I had with him was, I'm going to say early last week or maybe a week, late the week before that. He indicated to me that he was unable at that time to find an appraiser. The state has required him to hire an appraiser of some unusual background to appraise the value of that parcel that's coming out. I don't understand what the particular skill is for this particular appraisal, but it's something to do with that appraiser's ability to appraise recreation property, or whatever the case may be, so that they can document what the value is that you're giving up. So he's been working on that, he tells me that he's had some difficulty finding that person. He has also told me that the state has required him not to just survey that one piece that's coming out, but they've asked him, or are requiring us, to survey the entire parcel, the entire parent parcel, not just the quarter acre or whatever it is that they're taking out. And he has yet to find or arrange for that survey to be done. I've explained to him that we have on two occasions sent a proposal to the state, to the Department of Environmental Safety, asking them if they would approve a couple of plans that we came forward with. And those were to establish a multipurpose field in the area on Corbin Road that we bought several years ago, to form a protective radius around the proposed new well. The state has, on both occasions, steadfastly said, no. No parking. You can use it for recreation, but you cannot park. So our engineer evaluated different ways of getting into that particular parcel, and there are wetlands, and there are ditches, and there are curb cuts that are required and licenses from the state that you have to acquire to get permission to come off of the state onto the property. You can't just cut curb cuts anywhere you want on state, limited access highways. So, the state has steadfastly said that they don't want, they want no parking within the protective radius, which now consumes all, I'm going to say 95% maybe, of the old access roads. As you come off of Corbin Road, you turn right, there's a gate there. That protective radius coming right out to that gate, so there's no parking anywhere on that old road. And you might get one car in front of the gate. You can't park anywhere on the property that's owned to our west, so, because the protective radius consumes almost all of their property. So there's no parking prospects there. So we're looking at parking on the side of Corbin Road, or developing portions of the old Route 10 going south of Corbin Road as parallel parking of some sort. And we have to research, A, the status- You can't park anywhere on the property that's owned to our west, so, because the protective radius consumes almost all of their property. So there's no parking prospects there. So we're looking at parking on the side of Corbin Road, or developing portions of the old Route 10 going south of Corbin Road as parallel parking of some sort, and we have to research, A, the status of that road, when the state gave it up, did they actually give it up to the town, does the town own it, is it a Class 6 road, so on and so forth? That's gonna take a little bit of time. Our engineer is drawing up plans to show how the parking might work. We will then need to submit that to the state and ask their concurrence that we can basically get a curb cut to turn into that space when there's events going on. So you might have 30 or 40 cars pulling up, turning in, coming out, we're looking at different ways of having cars go in in one direction and come out on the other end of Airport Road. So we need to figure out what the soils are, can it be brushed back, how do we control that? We're kind of crossing pedestrian safety, you're gonna create an attractive nuisance there, and so can we put up a pedestrian crossing there? Can we put up pedestrian crossing warning signs there? Will the state allow it? Because Corbin Road is a state road. So these things are ongoing. I expect I'll actually have our next set of designs from the engineer probably this week. So that's continuing on while Ed is doing his thing, and we were understood, it was understood by he and I, he and I were working together.
Working together.
And I haven't heard anything about permits being denied or applied for.
No, I haven't either.
I have Ed on the phone right now.
Can I, go ahead, you got him on the phone. Wait a minute, were you done, Hunter?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, thank you. I don't know if he's trying to come in, but I know I am on the phone here. So one of the things I asked him, I said, is it the school district's responsibility to have the appraisal? He said, no, it's not, it's the town's. But the school, because we need to move this quickly, is willing to get, was willing to try to get the appraisal done, because it's not moving fast. So he's on the phone right now, and he can speak to it, and he can also speak to how in the beginning, when he initially had the conversation with the state, that what they told him was, it doesn't need to be this, they told him the same thing about it just being a bench by the water. So go ahead, Ed.
Sure, sure. The, when I talked to the guy, Eric, at the state, he said that the process just needed to be followed to identify the property that you were converting, get an appraisal so that you have an equal value, there had to be equal value, equal size, and equal, value was both in monetary and recreational use, in that, once you do that and identify a property, then we can work towards making the conversion, and that the new property, we didn't have to actually develop it to park, but we had to have a plan to how it could be used as a park.
Just a plan?
Just a plan, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I wouldn't take the exception of anything he just said, I think he actually confirmed everything I said. And in terms of developing the property, the school has offered, and I think Ed, and I'd love to have him confirm it or not, has offered $40,000 to assist in the development of that end part.
Ed, do you wanna comment on that?
Forty thousand's more than I think I had offered, but I said that there was 40,000 in the capital, there's a capital fund that had 40,000 in it that we could, if we got to a point of making it something that the school district would use as well, we would, you know, we could consider putting it on a warrant to be able to withdraw the money from that fund.
Okay.
So our proposal, I think we're saying the same thing, and the 40,000 that was offered as the schools offered to help improve the property, it's a community asset, why would we not want to allow the school and the town to have a?
I'm sorry, can't we just say designate an area, and we don't have to develop it yet, we don't have to do anything, and let them get started?
Well, we can do whatever you like, but the, you know, the idea is, it's supposed to be as, as we've said maybe in two different ways, is it has to be a similar functionality, and right now it is not a playing field. If you put 10 little kids out on it, you'd have, have them come back with sprained ankles or, you know, broken ankles or something. So you have to turn it into something that can be used.
You don't have to do it right off, though.
No, no, but I think that before we get to the end of this, there would have to, there should be, the agreement between the town and the school as to how it's gonna be developed, and it's gonna pay for what.
Yes, but they?
But we have to quantify all this before we get to it. And so I'm still not, I'm pretty sure that our parcel is bigger than the parcel that they want to take out of the easement, but I'm not certain about its value. I mean, if we paid $30,000 for the property, I'm just gonna make this up for point of illustration, if the appraisal of the lot coming out were to be appraised at $100,000, then it would be a failed effort, the state would not allow. So there's a few kind of missing pieces that are still floating.
Can we get a friendly appraisal?
And I don't know, and I was under the impression that Ed was doing his thing on those items, and I'm doing my thing on my items, and the two would come together at some point.
But there's an urgency to, go ahead.
I don't feel that the appraisal will be that high on that property, it's a landlord piece of property, there it is. So when you count that out of a 50-acre piece with no access except through the schoolyard, it's no value to anyone else but the school. So it's not, it's not gonna appraise, I mean, the whole 50 acres is worth probably a million dollars, but the, that one acre is not gonna be worth 100,000.
Yeah, so how quickly can we get the appraisal done? That's what's holding it up, let's get it done.
Right, I mean, I could get the appraisal done, I just need to know from the state what the, what type of an appraisal they'll use. They call me a specific appraisal, type of appraisal, but I don't, I asked them for that information, and they didn't respond, because they don't wanna respond to me, they want, they wanna respond to the town.
Okay, so we need to look into that and?
Now that I'm aware of that, I will call them, they'll have that in their last call.
Yeah, good, 'cause we're running out of time. Tim?
Thank you, Ed.
Wait a minute, hold on. There was a woman in the back that hasn't spoken at all.
Does the recreational site have to be in place before their permits are issued and they can start building?
I believe so.
No.
If not, let's just do it.
On what grounds, sorry, on what grounds would the grant issue, which obviously the school board and the school district have a vested interest in making sure that this grant issue is resolved, and I think we're all in agreement that we're gonna work together to figure out this grant issue. Can you explain on what grounds the grant issue would hold up the building permit? Since there was some confusion about that before, and what was said was that the building permit normally would be, is the building safe, does it have a code, so forth.
Good questions. I don't have the answer.
I mean, I don't wanna lose any more money than we need to if it gets held up and?
We gotta get this built, I would agree, 110%, gotta get it built. Yes.
I just don't understand, just give the permits. It's the school's land, first of all, it's your grant, so you need to figure out how to make that work, but why hold up the permit for that property?
I think that was part of the Manchester solution.
Well, it was, right.
Just what you said.
But Manchester's been built, and they've been working on this for three years. We can't get a permit.
Okay, very quickly to jump into that, yeah. Yes, done.
This has been done already, you guys did that with the tennis courts. The tennis courts that were on, that were granted on our property, you moved them already. Is that correct, Ed?
Yeah, but I'm not sure that's a, that's a town. Same kind of scenario.
Is that possible?
When the town or the school district decides that the use is no longer necessary, so like the hockey rink, the town was doing something else in place of the hockey rink on the property, and that was fine. They can, they can do whatever they want when it comes to that, that's, it's not about the use, this is specifically about the lane.
Okay, so, I'm kind of in a loss at the moment, but, as part of our discussions together, I think, and Hunter's gonna look at, you said you're gonna follow up with what Ed just said, and then, where did Ed go?
He left long time ago.
Went, okay. Paul, I got you, Paul.
It was just about town sports, but I don't think it was to the perspective.
Okay, thank you. No, I forgot the hell I was gonna say. Anyway.
I already said, I'm required to, to go in inspection.
Okay, good, so, we'll get some things done, and we gotta get it done. So when can we meet, Steve?
Uh, we have a meeting.
Could you elect a couple, get a couple of people to attend a public meeting, we'll post it, do everything we need to do, and come to some understanding that we'll present back to both boards. In the meantime, you're not gonna be kicked out, we're not gonna close fences, we're not gonna do this, not gonna do that, it's your property, I mean, it's your area to go in if you wanna begin to fix it up, it'll cost you some bucks, but that's okay. It says you got $40,000.
I have you to do it this week, but I leave for vacation on Monday, so.
Yeah, just give it to me this week. So when would be a good time to meet?
So if we, if we're going with the two from each, and then coming together, the sooner the better.
Okay, so I have, wait a minute, I got Dr. Sibley.
Saturday.
Oh, geez, that's when I go see my grandkids. What the hell was the date today, June 14th, that's right.
We're talking about a joint meeting between two from each?
Yeah.
Plus Hunter and Donna.
What's Thursday look like for you?
During the day? We have a board meeting at night, if it's during the day, they're open, and then we can discuss it at our board meeting.
I can only go, I'm gonna go, but I'd like to have my vice chair with me, too. When can you go? Or is there other people on the board who would wanna go?
I think Keith was in the first session, I would check with Keith, but interfere with him.
I can make arrangements to be there Thursday.
Jim?
But you're in the morning, early, yes, middle of the day, no.
Can you meet early?
Meet early.
Yes, but can I just ask John if he can, I wanna make sure it's recorded, because I know the public, if they're working, they may not be able to see it.
After 8:00, more than 9:00.
So Thursday?
Thursday, 22nd.
Thursday, 22nd, at the time.
Oh, really?
I was gonna say.
6:00, 6:30.
Jesus.
No, okay, we got it. No, I said we're good, Thursday.
You say 6:00?
Okay, and then?
So we're serious, 6:30?
Location will be where? Where do you wanna meet?
Jim's house.
Sol-Tale's not open, so. Where do you wanna meet?
Go to the golf course.
We'll meet at the SAU, right? Have a nice setup there. We need a conference room in the SAU, 6:30.
What?
Are you serious, 6:30 in the morning?
I was throwing that out there, but it's gonna be early.
Don't say the number you don't wanna throw out, 6:30, he'll be there.
That'd be a stretch.
Well, I can be there.
Who's meeting? It sounds like there's three of you on the select board.
No, we're gonna, we'll talk about two. Thank you, though, it's a good point.
You can have a third.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll just come straight from work, though.
8:00.
8:00.
8:00, please.
8:00, Thursday?
When does the school board pick who's on that committee to meet with?
I think we already did, because I think you had?
Well, Jenna and Tim had met originally, but, are you wanting to change that? Do you wanna meet with them? Do you wanna have a vote after?
With the attitude coming forward to all of this? I am not readily ready to accept. Well, how are you forward?
You two can meet.
Steve and I, 8:00, Thursday morning, SAU conference room.
Okay, and we'll have?
Where exactly is that?
Just in the tall building.
Tall school.
The tall.
You can walk to it.
I'll be able to walk over.
Okay, good. We all set?
Good.
Okay, I've got two more items. Where'd that Larry Cody?
Right there, up here.
Oh, yeah.
He said 8:00 in the morning?
Yep. We have a, need to make a motion to appoint Larry Cody to the Heritage Commission for two years, term to end 2025.
I make that, just trying to hear people talk.
Okay, let's, we're still carrying on business, thank you.
Fine.
Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, make a motion to appoint Larry Cody to Heritage Commission for a two-year term, term to expire 2025.
All those in favor, we've gotta do a roll call vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah, yes.
And Jeff, thank you, it must be like 2:00 in the morning out there.
It is 3:15.
3:15. God bless you. Go sightseeing tomorrow, yeah.
Sleep in, in the afternoon.
So that passes, Larry Cody is there. Did you get that, Ryle?
Yes, thank you.
All right, now, we have the opening of the bids for 73 Old Goshen Road bid. This is from, Brogan, Braden?
Braden.
Braden White?
Right.
Okay. They don't open mail much, my wife does that, so. Braden White has a bid of $42,500 for the 73 Old Goshen Road bid. Town of Newport hereby notices the sale of a property we transferred, quick deed, and this is from Sean Grisham. Let me look at this carefully. Did he give a check? There wasn't a check in there, was there?
No, it was cash.
Cash, okay, thank you. In your office, Paul?
No.
Brandon White.
Brandon White, okay, excuse me, and this is a minimum bid of $34,766.83. $34,000, $766.83. That was the amount of the taxes owed.
So he has the ability to meet that bid?
That's what we, that's what we stated at the last, next meeting, he'll be notified of the, his bid and what he would want to do with that.
Given the opportunity to meet or exceed.
Exceed, okay. Good. Is that all we need to do? All right. Correspondents, board, Jeff, North, anything, then you can go to sleep.
Nah, nothing for me today, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Keith?
I'm all set.
You're all set, okay. Jeff, Kessler?
Yeah, a couple things. Question on petition articles, generally petition articles are not developed by the board, we don't review them, they basically come from the petitioner, and if they have the required signatures, they go on to the warrant, and it's really up to the petitioner to make sure that they're accurate, they're done right, and all that stuff. The other question as to why we didn't speak against it at the deliberative session, I think one reason I decided not to speak was because... think one reason I decided not to speak was because Mr. Spalding there was standing up there at the podium daring us to come up so we could really, I forget the exact words, but basically hear what, something about, so he wanted us to come up so he could hear what the liars would say.
He said that?
Yes. So I didn't, I didn't feel any need to, you know, participate in that sort of exchange. So that's why I did not feel any need to speak.
Thank you. Jim?
Uh, no, I just want to acknowledge and thank the people that did send emails and reached out on concerns of a number of issues as of late. So I, when appropriate, I do respond back to those emails, but in this case, I knew that we would be talking about it tonight and, and getting sort of good spots. So thank the residents for sending those emails of concern. Certainly, as Ed would appreciate right now, we do hear those, we do read them, we do listen. So thank you for sending those. And the people reaching out to me tonight, I appreciate feedback in any form that I do get it. The phone calls that I've received also. So thank you for all those communications. Much appreciated.
Okay. And I've talked enough, I can't say anymore. Town manager?
Just one item. There was a letter arriving, a letter, or it came to our attention, that the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services is seeking a letter representing or certifying that the select board, I'll let me back up, this is relative to expedited minimum impact wetlands permit application for the community center.
Yeah.
So that process allows the select board to ask that the process be slowed down so they can review, investigate, comment on, and so on and so forth. The proposal for the second question, they afford you the opportunity to submit a, quote, a signed statement from the municipal conservation commission or local governing body certifying that they have reviewed the application and do not require additional time for investigating or commenting. So in the, in the off chance that you are satisfied with the information, we sent out an electronic version to you. I have a letter to be signed under the chairman's signature, just simply indicating that you have no, you don't require additional time for investigation.
Do you want the conservation commission to also speak to that issue? They're meeting tomorrow night.
Either or, or both. They can do it independently of one another. We can prepare another letter for them if you like saying the same thing.
Both of, yeah, good. Yes ma'am, you had one?
No, I was just stretching.
Stretching. Paul does that all the time. Okay. We're actually getting to a point of closing the meeting, but I will, because this is a representative government representing the people. I, yes, I already had there, young lad, what, young lad?
I heard the action of who's calling up the state to clarify some information they need, but who has the action to call up on issuing the permit to unblock the building?
That would go through the town, and at this point, it would be planning, planning and zoning.
Building inspector. And building inspector. But as, again, I have no idea what the basis for that decision.
No, I mean, that stuff, that's all by surprise, so.
I just want to make sure somebody knows that they have the action to tomorrow go and figure that out.
Yeah, good, thank you. Glad you're here.
So who is it? The town manager?
Yeah. Well, it's, we'll, we'll delegate at this point. It may be our building, building inspector too, that does that Allen Chase. You know Allen?
I do. Those are my road. So who's going to call him?
Hunter.
Okay. I already sent him an email.
Yeah, good. Watch your speed.
I just want to let you, how come we're going to be building down there in the flood zone with that wreck on it? It's all flood plain.
I, I can't answer that.
You look up on the map on the state of New Hampshire, it's all flood. It's all flood zone.
I, I can't answer that at this point, which is, one of the guidelines, is one of the things I should say.
I know, but I mean, it's just, it's all in flood zone. You pay flood insurance, right?
Nope. I'm not in that flood area.
Those, those permits are working their way through the state's process if it were, if it's something the state approves of, the permits will not be issued.
Will not be. That's all I, I don't know any more.
I mean, you look on the map, you know, state map, it's all...
I know that has been, flood has come up at, at a point, but...
I see it.
Okay, yeah, we have a nine-thirty meeting, but I'll...
But if it is approved...
One or first, go ahead.
If it is approved in a flood zone, does that mean the people will have to pay a higher insurance for flood, flood insurance?
No, I don't think we've given that.
No more than the town already pays for stuff that's existing there now, which is nothing.
But there's no building. It would be a building.
There are buildings there.
Yeah. There's three or four buildings.
I'm not sure those buildings are within that line.
Okay. Uh, I would look for a motion to go into, is it non-public?
Basically adjourned.